I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Weston Board of Education and verify that we in fact do have a quorum this evening.
Yes.
Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Per the Weston Board of Education bylaws, tonight I will be starting the meeting in order to conduct the election of the Weston Board of Education Chairperson. So at this time, I would like to ask the members of the Board of Education for a nomination for Board of Education Chair.
I would like to nominate Deb Lowe. Where are you, Deb? There you are on my screen. I would like to nominate Deborah Lowe to be the Chair of the Board of Education here in Weston.
Thank you. Do we have a second on the motion?
I second.
Thank you, Lisa. Jody, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. David Felton?
Aye.
Sharon Ferraro?
Aye.
Michael Guido?
Aye.
Lisa Luft?
Aye.
Peter Gordon?
Aye.
Nicole Wallach?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, Deborah.
Thank you all.
It's all yours!
I will now turn the meeting over to the Board of Education Chair, Ms. Deborah Lowe, who will continue with the board elections. All right, thank you Superintendent Forty. I will now take nominations for the Vice Chairperson of the Weston Board of Education. Do I have any nominations?
Yes, I'll step up. I'd like to move that Weston Board of Education nominate David Felton as Board Vice Chairperson.
All right, thank you, Peter. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other nominations? All right, Jody, would you like to do the roll call again?
Yes. Deborah Lowe?
Yes.
Sharon Ferraro?
Aye.
Michael Guido?
Aye.
Lisa Luft?
Aye.
Peter Gordon?
Aye.
Nicole Wallach?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Congratulations, David.
Thank you.
And now I will entertain nominations for the Weston Board of Education Secretary.
I would like to nominate Sharon Ferraro.
And I second.
All right, thank you, David, and thank you, Lisa. Jody, do you want to do the roll call again?
Yes. Deborah Lowe?
Aye.
David Felton?
Aye.
Michael Guido?
Aye.
Lisa Luft?
Aye.
Peter Gordon?
Aye.
Nicole Wallach?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you. Now it's time for the Chairperson's update. First of all, I want to thank everyone for supporting all of our new officers. And I also want to take an opportunity to welcome Nicole Wallach as a new board member. So, welcome Nicole. I do want to thank you specifically for choosing me as Chair. I feel that I have sort of big shoes to fill from Steve Ezies. I want to thank him for his steady, informed, and supportive leadership. And I'm glad that next meeting in December, we'll have a chance to recognize both board members who have left, Chad, and also Steve. In terms of organization, just a quick note that I'll be sending out an email that will be assigning the committee assignments for the upcoming year. So I'll do that via email and copy Jody and Superintendent Forty. And the biggest thing is that I want to encourage everyone to work together because what we have to do is add a major focus for this year. We need to bring forward all the school facilities issues that have been identified in reports and Board of Ed work beginning in 2017 and going as late as last June. So there's a wealth of information. There's been a lot of hard work done in the background. And I think it's our job as the current board to work towards bringing a proposal forward to the voters. That's a long, arduous, and complicated process, but I feel a sense of urgency, and I would like to do it as soon as we, as humanly possible. So we have to look at a timeline and a series of meetings to get all that done. And so I'd like to calendar an extra Board of Education meeting, call it a special Board of Education meeting, each month beginning in December and going through June. And the items on the agenda will only relate to the facilities issues because I think we as a board need to kind of talk together, work together, and hash this out. We need to figure out how to collaborate and coordinate with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. We need to inform and involve the parents and the community and figure out how to do that. So I think working in concert with our existing EOC Committee, I see the EOC Committee as doing some background legwork and providing the structure for those special Board of Education meetings, collecting information, piling information, inviting speakers, et cetera. And also, this year I'd like to see a more active communications committee with its major focus being keeping the public and the parents informed as to our process and the avenues for keeping informed and providing feedback. So that means there's a lot of work to do between now and June. And if anyone would like to take back their vote for me as Chair, now's your chance because I'm not sure, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be an interesting ride. So I thank you for your, you know, your support. And I think we've got a great team here. And so I'm looking forward to getting this to the voters. Again, there's no deadline there, but I'm looking at next June in terms of any state applications we have to put forward and hopefully an eventuality of voting on a proposal next November. So there's a lot of work ahead. All right, so that's my Chairman's update. So Student Board of Education Representatives. I welcome that, and I think Superintendent Forty will introduce you. Some of us are new on the Board of Ed, and we'd love to meet you and hear you. Yes, thank you. Welcome. This evening, we have Alice Sullivan and Isabella Grano Wetter, who are going to give us the High School Student Board of Education Representative Report this evening. Thank you so much for being here, Alice and Isabella.
Thank you for having us. Um, I can, oh, sorry. I can start us off. We were especially grateful this past week or last week to have Superintendent Forty attend our most recent student government meeting. Students appreciated the opportunity to collaborate with her directly and her willingness to listen, brainstorm, and provide guidance. It was meaningful for us to show students that their ideas and concerns are valued at the administrative level. If we get glitchy, let us know because we're going back and forth here. The junior class just had their junior college kickoff assembly where they were introduced to the college search and application timeline through the guidance department. And for many of them, it helped the process feel more approachable. And we've noticed that the juniors are already taking initiative in reaching out to their counselors, exploring programs, and starting early planning conversations. This week is also going to be very exciting for us as student government has been coordinating a school-wide food drive, which is tied to our brand-new boys volleyball pep rally, which is going to be a seniors versus juniors matchup. This is the first time that the school has hosted anything like this, and the anticipation has been incredible. The combination of service as well as school spirit has energized the building, and we're excited to see the turnout this Friday. On a more mundane note, we're also pleased to report that the phone policy continues to have a noticeably positive impact in hallways and classrooms. We're seeing way more conversation, stronger peer connections, and just more interaction between students and teachers. A lot of us feel that the overall atmosphere has become more upbeat and present, and it's been really encouraging to see people embracing the change. Um, we also had the WIS Blue Ribbon Parade last week, which was another highlight of our month. I know as high schoolers loves seeing like our former teachers and all the kids from the WIS parade, and so that was nice. Next week, we're really excited to be taking a group of student government members to the CASC Leadership Summit. And it's going to give students at Weston High School the opportunity to learn from other student leaders across the state and develop leadership skills and bring new ideas back to our own student government. Um, and finally, we are proud to share that the American Heroes Club partnered with our student government group to raise over $3,000 for the Disabled Veterans Organization. So, great work there. Thank you, guys.
Thank, thank you both. That's an amazing amount of work and a credit to you and the entire student body and the faculty and Principal Canetta, such exciting projects. We were talking just a little bit before the meeting started. I have heard lots of wonderful descriptions about the WIS Parade, and I'm so glad that the high school could partake of that. Your food drive sounds amazing. We'll have to keep us surprised as to who wins the volleyball game. And I'm glad to hear from a student's perspective that you actually think that the phone restrictions are having a positive impact. That's really great to hear from because, you know, you're at the center of it. And if you're feeling positive, that gives us, just, that gives me a good feeling. So thank you for your reports, really appreciate it.
Ladies, nice, nice job, ladies. I just wanted to say that was a very detailed report, and it was great. As a Board of Education member for five years now, I love to hear that level of detail. So thank you so much. It makes us feel, you know, more, more tied to the school community. And I also, as someone who has, Deb mentioned, the WIS Blue Ribbon Parade, as someone who was participating in that and saw the kids, I can't thank the high school kids enough and the middle school kids as well for coming out and supporting those kids in WIS and being out there and high-fiving the kids and the band playing. And they just, they just were on top of the world with that parade. So thank you so much for your participation in that. It was really wonderful to see the school community come together and support each other like that. So, thank you.
And a quick shout out to the person who pulled the fire alarm and forced everybody out of the high school because the WIS has like, don't be encouraging that. But it did get the entire school outside to the joy of our WIS kids. So the silver lining is, we did have quite a few students out there, and the WIS kids loved it.
We had plenty out there before the fire alarm, too.
Just saying.
Okay, any other comments? All right, well, thank you, ladies, very much, and we'll see you next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for approval of the minutes. Neither Nicole or I will actually vote, but I will entertain motions about the October 20th meeting minutes as well as the October 27th meeting.
I have the motion. I just have one quick clarification on the October 27th special meeting minutes. Probably for you, June, at the top, the present versus absent. I think that just needs to, it's accurate, but it seems to repeat itself for this little bit of overlap about.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So other than that, I will make a motion that the Weston Board of Education approve the minutes from the October 20th, 2025, and October 27th, 2025 meetings.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Lisa. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
I'm actually not sure I can vote on the 20th because I wasn't actually there. So I think I have to abstain from that, but the 27th I can vote for. So I don't know if you have to separate them out or if it's good to go.
And I'll be opposite, Sharon. I have to abstain from the 27th, and we can vote on the 20th.
All right, well, great, you cancel each other out. All right, let's vote on approving the minutes of October 20th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All abstentions?
Aye.
All right, and the October 27th minutes, all in favor of approving those?
Aye.
All abstaining? All right, thank you. All right, we will move on to public comment. And I know that there's a preface to public comment. So it's the first time I've actually read this, so bear with me a little bit, and then we will open it up. This explains the rationale behind public comment and the parameters. The Board of Ed welcomes the opportunity to hear from members of the public about matters concerning the schools. Public comment's an important chance for the board to receive input and feedback from our school community. We listen attentively to all comments shared. While we value and pay close attention to public comment, it is our practice not to respond substantively or sometimes at all during public comment. There are several reasons. First, engaging in a discussion on a non-agenda item could violate the board's obligation to comply with the Freedom of Information Act. Second, the board or the administration may not be prepared to discuss certain matters raised in the first instance by a public comment. Third, the board develops its meeting agenda carefully to ensure that the board addresses matters that are pressing or relevant at the time of the meeting. We encourage members of the public with specific questions or concerns or complaints about our schools to reach out directly to Superintendent Forty or email the Board of Education at boardofeducation@westonps.org. And there are additional information about public comments can be found on our website. Jody, do we have anyone wishing to make a public comment?
Yes, we do. For those individuals that are on the attendee side, if you care to speak for public comment, kindly raise your hand using the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen. What I'm going to do is I'm going to call a name. I'm going to promote that individual from an attendee to a panelist. Once you become a panelist, actually, before I go back one step, when I promote you to a panelist, you're going to see something cross at the bottom of your screen. You're going to click on that, and that is going to promote you into a panelist so that you will be able to speak. Once you are a panelist, kindly turn on your camera so that we could see you. State your full name and state your Weston Street address. You will have five minutes to speak. And I'm going to begin. We have Chad Hopner, who is here to speak a public comment. Chad, I am going to promote you to a panelist. Give me just one moment. Okay, Chad, you are now a panelist. Kindly turn your camera on, state your full name and your street address, and then you'll have five minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Michael Chad Hepner. My address is 25 White Birch Road. Greetings, everyone. First of all, I want to say thank you and welcome to, thank you to the previous members and the current members, and also welcome to the new Board of Ed members. I'm privileged to be a former Board of Ed member, so I know something about the challenges of the role, and I thank you all, new and also current members, for your dedication and vision, and I wish you tremendous success in moving our district forward. And Deb, I didn't know that your comments tonight would be about the facilities at the beginning, so I applaud that. And my comments will focus on that in the future because it's essential. But tonight, I'm speaking about a familiar topic, which you all are accustomed to. I'm back as a town resident to speak about technology. And that's, this is as follows. How we allow our kids to grow up safely in the digital age is a central educational issue of our age. And as I see it, it has three facets. One are devices, two is AI, and three is curriculum. One, on devices, there's a lot in the future for that. I'll leave that discussion to the future and make two quick points. First, the school should be commended for putting in place restrictions about cellphone use. And the student representatives, which you called out, Deb, comments there tonight. It's all you need to feel great about that effort. AI, number two, is a vast subject, and it deserves another public comment from mine and many other voices. But curriculum, I'd like to talk about that tonight. And I and many parents like me believe we need to deeply question the role of tech in our classrooms. This is not just me, not just Weston parents. I'll read now from an op-ed that appeared two days ago in the New York Times by Dr. Jean Twenge, author of Ten Rules for Raising Kids in a High-Tech World. "Districts Could Even Eliminate School Electronic Devices," she means laptops, "entirely." "Many parents and teachers might protest that this would have an adverse impact on learning or tilt the scales in favor of wealthier students, but several studies suggest it might instead improve learning." "One study of nearly 300,000 4th and 8th graders in the U.S. found that students who spent more time using digital devices in language arts classes performed worse on reading tests." "A 2018 meta-analysis found that reading on paper compared with reading digitally led to significantly better comprehension among, among students from elementary school to college. Across 24 studies, college students who took handwritten notes were 58% more likely to get As in their courses than those who typed notes on laptops. In contrast, students who typed notes were 75% more likely to fail the course than those who wrote them by hand." And this gets at the central defense we always hear about technology in classrooms, which is, we need to prepare them for the 21st century. I wholeheartedly agree. But we don't need to do that by teaching our kids how to use a laptop for every lesson. I mean, who's to say if we'll even be using laptops 12 years from now when the very youngest at Weston graduate? We need to live by what I think our genuine words of wisdom, Peter Gordon once said, which is, we need to teach our kids how technology works, not how to work technology. I'm not suggesting that we be Luddites. We should aspire to be a district where our graduates know how the chips inside our laptops and the algorithm, algorithms in its software work, not how to open the laptop and do their schoolwork on a screen. Remember when we were all kids and we were told that we needed to learn coding so that we could be employable in the future? That hasn't aged so well. We have to stop treating education like job prep. It's not. We should be preparing our kids to learn, to think, and to solve. And tragically, it looks more and more like tech hurts those efforts. So, what to do? Well, Dr. Twenge has a suggestion. Parents should also have the option to opt out. I've spoken with many parents whose children struggle to focus while using laptops only for school administrators to tell them the devices are required. Angela Arsonot, a state representative in Vermont, is planning to introduce a bill to give parents the ability to opt their children out of receiving school-issued devices. So for specific next steps, I would ask for two. I suggest the district consider, as Dr. Twenge suggests, low-tech classrooms that parents can opt into. Mrs. Scanlon, who used to teach here, a beloved teacher who retired last year, had a reputation for keeping a low-tech classroom. If she can do it, why not others? And 10 years ago, all our classrooms were low-tech. We somehow made it through that deprivation landscape intact. Number two, I would like to have a meeting with a group of concerned parents, the administration, and the curricula heads of the various schools so that parents can make their voices heard on this subject and so the district can create and execute a technology, philosophy, and roadmap that helps our kids do what will actually prepare them for the future: learn, think, and solve. And thank you for your time and your attention, and thank you for all that you do.
Chad, you haven't changed a bit. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Chad.
Thanks, Chad. Your voice is valuable, and we really appreciate it.
Jody, just give me one moment. I will move you back to an attendee, and then I will promote the next person. Okay. Hillary, you are the next person that I am going to promote. Okay. Hillary, you're now joining the meeting as a panelist. Kindly turn your camera on, state your full name and your Weston Street address, please. And then you'll have five minutes to speak.
All right, I had to reconnect as a panelist. I am Hillary Felton. I live at 21 Ridge Road in Weston. I am speaking today on behalf of Mothers in Blue. First, we want to welcome the new board members to the board. Congratulations and welcome. We're excited to have you join the current board. So I'm representing the group today to sincerely thank the district and especially Principal Bluestein and the rest of the middle school leadership for the thoughtful and compassionate response to the most recent anti-Semitic incident. Your actions made it clear that hate has no place in our schools, and we are truly grateful. Unfortunately, with three additional incidents this year on top of the pattern we saw last year, it's clear that our community is still facing a serious ongoing challenge. And while that reality is difficult, it also reinforces why this partnership between families, educators, and the district is so important. We are heartened to see the rollout of the No Place for Hate in grades 6 through 8. The engagement we've already seen from students and staff is encouraging, and we hope that success will pave the way for broader expansion next year so we can further reinforce this consistent and comprehensive approach at an early age. We also appreciate the district's commitment, under TIO's guidance, to reviewing curriculum, beginning with the pilot review of 7th grade. The initial findings show what many of us have felt. There are significant gaps across multiple areas when it comes to Jewish identity, culture, and historical context. This review is a critical first step, and we appreciate the administration's commitment to a more comprehensive review and developing a plan to address the gaps identified. With these results in mind, we ask that the board ensures continued priority is given to reflecting, to the reflection of Jewish identity throughout our district curriculum and keeps this work front and center. Finally, we want to emphasize the importance of supporting our teachers and staff. They are on the front line managing difficult conversations, guiding students, and responding in real time to harmful language and behaviors. They need continued training and resources so they feel equipped and empowered, not alone. We remain committed partners in this work. Our goal is simple: a school environment where every student, including our Jewish children, feel safe, respected, and proud of who they are. Thank you for everything you're doing and continue to do to move this work forward with urgency and care.
Thank you very much, Hillary. Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary. Just give me a moment. I'm going to move you back to an attendee, and then I will promote another individual. Okay, the next individual that I'm going to promote is Lisa. Lisa, I am going to promote you to a panelist. Please click on the button on your screen, and then you'll move over. Okay, Lisa, you're now a panelist. Kindly turn on your camera, state your full name and your street address for us, and then you'll have five minutes to speak. Lisa, can you hear me? I can see that you're still muted. You've moved over to a panelist. Okay, Lisa, you're still muted?
I could.
There you go.
Hi, I'm sorry.
That's okay, now we can see you in here. You've got five minutes.
Just give me a minute. I'm going to head back upstairs where a kid won't bother me. Well, that kid just helped me. He saved me, so, not that kid. He won't bother me.
No problem.
The other one, okay.
Go right ahead.
Pardon. So I just wanted to take a minute to thank all of the board members. I don't, I haven't been able to make public comment before. Just wanted to thank you for the good work that you do on behalf of our students in Weston and to make sure that they have the best education possible. Thank you, and welcome to the new board members. My comment is pertaining to subcommittees, and in particular, the Curriculum Committee. As you know, David Felton has been a member of that committee since 2021, and he's currently Chair of that committee. If you know Dave, he's a very strong advocate on behalf of all families in Weston, but in particular Jewish families in Weston. And I'm just so glad that he's been working to get better age-appropriate education in Hurlbut and WIS regarding antisemitism and other kinds of hate. And I'm concerned that if he takes on a role as Vice Chair for the Board of Education, that it might, and this is my cat, might, you know, demote or even remove his voice from that, that committee. Please retain David Felton as the Chair of the Curriculum Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Jody, is there another question?
Yes, Lisa, I'm going to move you back. Give me just a minute.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Okay, Patricio, I'm going to promote you to a panelist. Give me just one moment. You're going to see a button come across your screen. Please click on that, and you'll come over. All right, we can see you on the panelist side. If you wouldn't mind turning your camera on, stating your full name and your street address, please. Oh, you're on, you're still on mute.
Okay, there you go.
There you go.
I do this for a living, and I can't believe I couldn't get it.
That's okay. That's okay. If you could just state your full name and your street.
Sure, my name is Patricio Cowie. I'm at Two Forty-Eight Weston Road. And I have three boys that are in the school system. Actually, no, I lied. Only two. My middle one is actually the Student Council President at WIS, and I'm very proud of them. One second, please. I have notes. I do want to state my... Just need to bring this down. Now, how do I do that? Bear with me, please. I can't get this... I can't get to my notes. Oh, there we go. So first of all, I just want to say congratulations to all the new board members. You know, it's always good to have a fresh set of eyes, you know, a new chair and a new vice chair. I think they will, just having that fresh set of eyes is gonna be great for the board. But the community does need continuity on subcommittees, sort of what Lisa was alluding to. So I want assurance that the most important committee, which is the curriculum and policy, will retain the existing chairs, who also happens to be the longest member of the board. And as you know, there is no substitute for experience. So I don't want what happened to my older son, which is I had to put him in a boarding school because I'm not seeing a lot of what's needed for him. I have two more kids, so I'm hoping that we keep that, those experts in these curriculum and policies, subcommittees, so that we can all benefit from it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you give me just one moment, I will move you back to an attendee. All right, that seems to be it for public comment. There are no other hands that are raised at this time. You can move on to your next agenda item.
Sure. Thank you, Jody. Find the next agenda item. Okay, old business. Weston Board of Education Policies, Regulations, and Bylaws: Second Review, Discussion, and Possible Action on the Civility Policy and Code of Ethics. Are there any comments, discussions about that policy from board members? I think this is the second read on this one, am I right? Okay. All right.
I'll jump in quickly. I think what I saw was in the Code of Ethics. So I don't have any comments or questions on the civility. For Code of Ethics, it looks like, and I just want to make sure this is correct, that you guys inserted the link for the social media policy. Is that correct from last time's reading?
Yes, that's the only change to the Code of Ethics draft.
Okay, all right. Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, I have the motion language. Move that the Weston Board of Education approve One Two Five Five Civility and Four One One Eight Point Two Two Code of Ethics as presented.
Okay, is there a second? Lisa, I think that was your hand? Okay. And, all right, thanks. Further discussion? All right, all those in favor of David's motion, raise your hands. Say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, policies are approved. Thank you. Policy Committee. New business. We are going to hear the Enrollment Projections update. I'm not sure who wants to introduce that, but this is apparently an annual report, critical information on a lot of our different issues and projects. So I'm not sure who needs to introduce that, but...
Yes, good. Hi, Dev. Good evening. Tonight, we have Mike Zubo with us from MP Planning, who will be presenting on Enrollment Projections update for this year and moving forward. Welcome, Mike. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you for this introduction. It's good to see everybody this evening. I know it's been a number of years. See a lot of familiar faces, a couple of new faces that we've been doing our enrollment projection report for Weston. I'm gonna start sharing my screen, and we'll kind of follow our typical process that we go through. I have a short deck. I'm gonna really kind of focus on the most salient points, but I'll open it up to questions and answers on any of the information that's contained in the slide deck, but I'll touch on what I think are the are the most important topical areas. So typical of our enrollment projection update, we'll always start with the projection comparison. We'll then take a dive into the enrollment drivers, go over the enrollment trends, and then get right into the enrollment projections themselves. So taking a look back is always important of how you fared over the last year. In particular, one of the challenges is always trying to project K accurately. Last year, we had a slight change in our methodology that we had used for a number of years. It worked out very well. One of the things where we're also seeing, and we've been adjusting this over the last two years, including this year, is just reduced in migration from slower housing turnover. So that's where we're seeing lower numbers of students really in that elementary in Hurlbut as well as WIS versus what we would typically project. So the actuals are trailing there, our projections. And then for the middle school, that number was really really aligned well with what we had projected. And then the high school actually came in just under ten students above what we had projected. Always a good way to be able to take a look back, see how we performed, look at the enrollment drivers, and see where we need to make some adjustments. So one of the newer data points over the last year, the Connecticut Department of Public Health has been doing annual population estimates. They typically lag about a year, so we have that estimate shown in the darker green bar for 2024. They're showing about a one percent growth since the 2020 census overall, so just under ten thousand five hundred residents for the town, according to the DPH estimates. Getting into our overall population change, nothing new came out this fall, especially as we were tracking the census data. ACS didn't provide any estimates, especially with the government shutdown, so this is largely the same, unfortunately, from our last update, just because of the federal data set hadn't been touched in quite some time. We do have new information for births. Department of Public Health is updating those quarterly. What we're showing for 2025 is through June, so a half a year there. What we do for that in order to be able to get the full year is we take a historic percentage and extrapolate that out forward. I think the big picture takeaway, especially as we look at our future kindergarten classes, is that the births overall have been up over the last four years. They've averaged about ninety annually. We do have a large birth cohort, right around a hundred students for 2024, and our estimates for 2025 aren't much different. So if we kind of take a look back of where we were about a decade ago, anywhere between the sixties to low seventies, births have significantly gone up since that data point. And I will point out that everything to the left of this box, our calendar year births, everything in the box and everything that we're gonna do going forward aligns with the new kindergarten entry age, which is really looking at that September to August window rather than that calendar year window that we've used for so many years in the state of Connecticut. We developed three different birth projections in order to be able to fill in those kindergarten classes in years five to ten in our ten-year projection. And they're on par, albeit slightly below what the last two years are. So really kind of that last four years, we're right around that average, especially for the green, which is showing our medium model. The blue, which is our higher model, is slightly above that, and then the red, which is our pessimistic model or our low model, is below that number by about ten overall. Not gonna spend a lot of time on unemployment. The state requires we have unemployment in our enrollment projections, but I will spend a little bit of time on home sales because it does have a bearing on what we're seeing in student immigration, which I'll talk about in a couple slides down the slide deck. But overall, after really having an all-time peak in 2020 and 2021 for total number of home sales, that number has dropped off and has continued to drop off over the last several years. 2024 is a full year of data. That was a hundred and twenty-five total sales, including single-family and condo. If you kind of track back to the left, the last time we had sales at that level, we're immediately following the Great Recession and kind of that housing collapse time period from 2008 through 2011 and that slow recovery. Our year-to-date, which really runs us through August or January through August, gets extrapolated for the full year. That's looking at about a hundred and sixteen or so total sales, so slightly below last year. But really, kind of when we track back, especially for our projections, we're kind of now comparing sort of that post-pandemic, that boom period, and then the drop-off to that pre-pandemic level, and sales right now are tracking well below where they were even pre-pandemic levels. Price points are up. There's very limited inventory. When you go through and really dig into the MLS, there's not a lot of inventory on the market. And we do have high price points, which have slowed that housing churn and turnover. Looking at housing permitting, that's really not at a tremendous level for the town of Weston, knowing that you're largely single-family, largely large-lot zoning. You have about ten permits annually for new housing construction. Over the last decade, when you net out your demolitions, you're adding about only seven new units per year. So that aligns with what we see overall from a population growth without adding a tremendous amount of units. Population stays relatively stable overall. Took a dive through the meeting minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission. No real subdivision of scale, no real permits issued, and no real developments that have been approved in the last twelve months. There's been some tweaks to the Village District Regulations to better align with some development interest there, but nothing is imminent and nothing that would be a real game changer from a density standpoint, adding students in for Weston schools. Getting into our enrollment trends, overall enrollment over the last year declined by about three percent. Over the last five years, Hurlbut bucked the declining trend and saw a growth of about eight percent. WIS saw a decline of about eleven. The middle school saw a decline of about eighteen, and the high school declined by about fifteen percent overall. This is just another way of looking at it by color-coding the cohorts. The green represents the larger cohorts relative to each other. The red represents the much smaller cohorts. So as you could see, we've had some passage of larger graduating classes, especially about five to eight to ten years ago. You know, graduating classes over two hundred. Now we're down into the high one-seventy, one-eighty category, but as we kind of track back to the left, we could see we have some of those smaller cohorts still needing to work their way through those lower elementary and elementary cohorts colored in red are the smallest that we've seen. Looking at our overall net migration, at the onset of the pandemic, net migration was up. That's where we saw some highs overall, especially in the elementary grades where, you know, we had forty-three, forty-six in given years, and we had a little bit of a peak before the pandemic happened, but since then, that number's been dropping off. This past year, for twenty-five, twenty-six, we actually saw net outmigration at the elementary and intermediate level. The middle school over the last two years has seen net outmigration, which prior to that, we had net inmigration. And the high school is typically variable from year to year with more outmigration than inmigration, but you know, that has been a pretty steady over the last couple of years where we've had net outmigration of about a dozen students. Looking at your enrollment composition, this is something that we've been looking at over the last several years, and this data is available through EdSite. It lags a year. The state doesn't release their full report till the spring, and we rely on that data. So it's really referencing twenty-four, twenty-five data, but overall, increase in student diversity of about twelve percent since 2015, sixteen. The largest growth in students identifying as Hispanic, Latino, as well as two or more races, and to a lesser extent, Asian. Getting into our historic enrollment, I won't spend a ton of time on this because I'll talk about historic enrollment a little bit later. It's more of a of a point to have in the informational packet, but I think one of the things that we could see, especially last year, twenty-four, twenty-five, this blue line represents our K cohorts. The orange line represents our births lagged five years. With that, eight months of eligibility for the kindergarten window for twenty-four, twenty-five, we saw a drop-off there of kindergarten, where we typically saw births increasing slightly. We expected to see kindergarten on a little bit of a similar trajectory. Instead, we saw a much smaller cohort for twenty-four, twenty-five due to that change in start dates. Looking at intermediate school, that has been declining over the last several years. We had a bit of an uptick for a couple of years with twenty-four, twenty-five, kind of having that little bit of a mini peak here of four hundred and eighty, and then that dropped off by about forty students in twenty-five, twenty-six. When you have only a couple of grades in a given building grouped together, you graduate a larger cohort. Moving up into the middle school, replace it with a little bit of a smaller cohort, and you have a larger decline overall within that grade grouping. At the middle school, we're also on that same declining trend. Enrollment dropped below four hundred and sixty. It's the lowest that it's dropped in recent memory, tracking back in the last twenty-five years. Looking at the high school, after a period of stability, enrollment has declined over the last six years, dropping just below seven hundred students. So getting into our projection update, we always like to be able to be clear on our methodology. For all grade-level projections, we rely on the cohort survival. It's pretty simple. It looks at the ratio of students progressing from one grade level to the next. Where we do break from that is for our kindergarten projections. We rely on more of a mathematical model. I'll touch on that in the following slides, but what the cohort survival does, it captures all of the factors that feed into enrollment in the town of Weston, housing, housing turnover, student immigration, student transfers in and out, student mobility, all those get kind of rolled into these ratios. When really kind of digging into that number, I think one of the things that we could touch on today is looking at the estimate of migration, which really looks at the most stable grade groupings within a district, looks at that first through seven versus two through eight the following year. Between 2017 and 21, we had really high in migration. We were just under four percent. Over the last four years, that's really dropped off where we're just over a half a percent. And twenty-five, twenty-six was first time in recent memory, going all the way back to 2007, 2008, where we had outmigration overall of, you know, a half a percent. So that's really tied into that when there's not many ins, the outs kind of outweigh the ins, so you're not having a lot of inmigration because in the larger single-family community, you're relying on housing sales and housing turnover. And when you're not seeing that, you're not bringing in new students within to the district, so we see that number typically drop off, and you could really kind of see it if you were to really look at all the individual ratios, and I don't want to get into an eye test here. You could do it when you could zoom in on a PDF, but you could clearly see that over the last several years, where we would typically see cohorts steadily grow in Weston from one year to the next. We're having some, you know, flat enrollment for those same cohorts, or we even start to see some loss. So we're seeing that outmigration outweigh the inmigration for those typically stable cohorts where we would normally see growth historically. What that tells us as demographers is that as we're modeling this, we're trying to strike a balance in lowering what that historic immigration factor is, and also trying Um and also trying to get an understanding of what the likelihood of that sustaining. So say those same enrollment drivers sustaining over the ten year window. So for this projection overall, um we're assuming and we don't project pre K. It's really a function of. Um your program and we carry that last number in October and we use move that forward. Um but we developed three models. Um our high projection model uses the high BERTs. Um but also uses a higher student in migration, so it has a higher um immigration modeling factor applied to it. On that one point six percent, but that is still below our ten year historic average of two point three percent. Um our medium model at one point two percent is also well below that historic average. Um that uses our uh medium birth projection model. And then our um low uses our low BERTs um as well as point six percent for our student immigration. Over the next ten years, which is well below that um historic ratio as well. So all of our models for this projection have been adjusted downward on that immigration factor. Um looking at our birth decay, historically, um Weston has about fifty two percent. Especially over the last decade of the kindergarten classes comprised of um students who were not born in Weston. Um so typically we see in migration being a really large factor, especially over the recent past and you could see this in the stacked bar chart. Um where our K component for immigration is that green bar and in some, you know, in some different years, especially where it. Corresponds to um some turnover and housing, we have a much higher factor there. When we track that back to the early two thousands. BERTs in the community were really the driving factor, so really kind of looking at it, I'm being less reliant on that static birth. Birth decay and more reliant on the immigration that's coming from that birth decay ratio. Um so the way we look at it is we put more influence. On um using this variable birth decay, which really accounts for. Um the change and and accounts for um the mobility of families um with with kids that are zero to five. So not yet um of age to come into um kindergarten or into public schools other than pre K. Uh but looking at them as being a major driving factor for the enrollment for kindergarten versus just solely relying on BERTs. We know BERTs are up. Um BERTs are at a little bit of a recent high in the last ten, fifteen years. Um and we know that immigration is down. Um so historically, we would use a blended model. That did both this equation on the right, our variable birth decay, as well as a regression based model that took into account housing sales. Um over the last several years, especially with the downturn in home sales, that model um lost reliability. So we went back to the variable birth decay, which we've been using for over a decade in many other Durg A and Durg B districts. Um it performed very well this past year. Um we were within two students for K. Um it projected a hundred and thirty three. We were within two of the. Actual um our our squared value isn't as high as we would like to be, but it performed very well. So this is the methodology that. Where we've employed again for this coming year. So looking at our district wide projections overall and um the way we're looking at especially the next several years, so. Anytime with enrollment projections, you have your greatest confidence in those first five years. We have known BERTs. We have students in seats. Um that's why when you look at our low, medium and high models, we have a much tighter banding. We have a a banding of about a hundred and twenty five students over the next five years. Um as that model moves out in years five to ten, um our assumptions on births, our assumptions on. Um in migration, um housing activity begin to um take over and they provide a greater level of influence versus. Those known data points. Um so that's where we start to see that wider spread. Um but nonetheless, um when you get out to um year ten and twenty thirty five, thirty six. Um we're at a spread of of just over two hundred and seventy students. Um so if you were to really kind of look at it across, you know, the various grades, um you're looking at about fifteen or so students per grade there. Um difference between those models, but all three models are in a general agreement that we're looking at a near term dip. Um uh flattening off of the enrollment overall, um getting to our median model, about two thousand students around the midpoint. Um and then all three models in the latter half of it can showing growth. So we began to say, well, you know, what what are those key drivers? And really kind of when we began looking at hurl butt and we look at the elementary schools. Um we look at those uptick in known BERTs. So where we averaged ninety BERTs over the last four years, it's much higher than what we had, you know, six, eight years ago. Um we're gonna expect larger birth cohorts or larger kindergarten cohorts. So. Over the next five years, we're gonna average just under five hundred students overall with a peak in twenty thirty, thirty one of five hundred and thirty five students. And over the course of the decade, averaging about five hundred and ten students. So as those larger birth cohorts. Um enter in as kindergartners, we're gonna have larger cohorts filling out hurl butt elementary. And then eventually those students are going to reach WIS. But in the near term, we have those smaller cohorts in WIS right now, so we're looking at very stable enrollment over the next four years, averaging. You've just under four hundred and thirty students and then we see that number increase moderately over the last five years. Getting an average of just over five hundred and thirty students over that time period. For the high school or for the middle school overall, that even gets lagged a little bit further, so we have those smaller cohorts and near term. Um moving through, we're looking at a decrease of about eight percent over the first five years. Um averaging under four hundred and fifty students and then as we start to see at the very tail end of our projection window that we can. Accurately project and see, we start to see those larger cohorts begin to matriculate from WIS into the middle school. And that's when we start to see enrollment rebound, getting back to current levels and a above that towards the tail end. And then for the high school, it's even further lagged. We're looking at declining enrollment of about sixteen percent over the next decade. Averaging just over five hundred and seventy students, uh but you could see where enrollment overall for a large part of the projection horizon. Really becomes very stable after this initial decline, averaging in the mid five, sixties or so for a majority of our projection horizon. This is what the individual grade level um group, grade level projections look like. Overall, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but you could kind of track back and through it if you wanted to be able to get into the details of the totals. And just in general, our takeaways, I think I touched on a lot of these key findings, but I think some of the key points I'll reiterate. Um with the reduced in migration and the downturn, the consist, the consistent downturn of the housing activity overall. Um we've lowered our projection models. All three of them have been adjusted downwards. Um for the next three years, assuming that we're gonna likely continue to see a slower um churn of housing. Uh we do know we have elevated BERTs coming down the pipeline. Um those are gonna be a big driver for the elementary schools. Um and then that reduced immigration is gonna continue to impact middle school and high school. Um so those projections have been reda- um. Revised slightly downward as well. Um so with that, I'll leave this slide up and I'll turn it over to the board if they have any questions. I'm glad to be able to go back through any of the slides that we have in tonight's deck.
Uh well, thank you for that presentation with so much information in a relatively short amount of time. Uh it's very dense um on the statistics there. Uh this will be a document that we will be studying throughout the year. Uh I open it up to questions or comments from board members.
I I'll jump in just cuz Mike, you referenced me without knowing you referenced me as a long time member, so.
I I you're one of the long time ones, David. I can't remember how many years, but I know it's been a number of years.
Uh I I wear it with a badge. Um so I so and I mentioned that because I've been going through this with you. This is now, I think Sharon. Mentioned as well. This is mine and Sharon's fifth year. So uh I'll just jump right in like we're friends and family at this point cuz we have been through this so many times. Um so one, one of the first questions I have is. In in years past, you talked about a COVID boom and the COVID boom didn't materialize. Is, are your charts updated for the COVID boom that didn't happen?
It's. I don't know if that's a, my charts are updated for the COVID boom um. I will say that's, we definitely see it in some of the numbers, but it was very short lived. I think one of the things that we've been tracking though, and if you recall, two or three years ago, we began really talking about, David, is. The uh birth uptick and presumably the level of BERTs that they're at today were. Probably due to some generational turnover when we had many homes turnover at the start of COVID. Where we were up around two fifty, two hundred and sixty annual housing sales, twice what they've been at before, twice what they're at today. Um I think that really. Comes to bear in what we're seeing from a projected number of BERTs because when I. Go through and I look at the cohort level data from the twenty twenty census and try to use that and fertility rates to project future BERTs. Solely, it doesn't match up with what we've been seeing. Um so I assume that turnover with a lot of younger families moving in. Um is being reflected in the BERTs overall and then we did in the. If we can bear looking at the eye chart one more time, um in our projections. We had all, we had really high in migration right in twenty twenty and twenty one. Um similar to what we had prior to it, but since then, that really has dropped off. So. To answer your question, the long term boom was not a longer term boom. It was a short term boom, but I think. What it did was it led to a lot more BERTs in the community um that are gonna lead to kindergartners. It's just lagged a little bit.
Okay, then my, you actually walked me right into my second question. Uh which is something I also asked you a couple of years ago. So on chart twenty seven or page twenty seven and twenty eight. Um you mentioned things like birth rates are up, used terms like elevated births, but when I was doing my homework ahead of this. The CDC is still reporting birth rates are down. As a matter of fact, birth rates are down from twenty twenty four. Uh that is the lowest birth year twenty twenty four and it doesn't appear that they are. Tracking with what you're showing, which is that you're expecting elevated births, birth rates. So. E- even with twenty twenty four birth rates being down by the CDC. If they did, i- i- if they did show up in Weston, those children would be showing up at hurl butt in twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine. So can you walk me through how in twenty eight, twenty twenty nine, being that birth rates in twenty twenty four are the lowest? And those children, and I could be completely misunderstanding what I'm reading and what you're showing me, so this is more of an. An educate me, but if tw- if birth rates are the lowest in twenty twenty four and these children are gonna show up at hurl what in twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine. How do we explain an uptick in on your chart?
I think we're mixing and matching birth rates and fertility rates, so um birth rates. Are high and then I'll just flip back and hopefully not I can make. These are actual BERTs reported to the DPH based on mother's residence. There's no confusion about it. Actuals. The CDC is probably repert- reporting at a very large scale fertility rates. Which are down. We use to project BERTs going forward, we use Connecticut specific fertility rates. Um there and there's. Fertility rates issued by various sources out there annually um by state, by race, by age um. And that contributes to the birth projections going forward, but these BERTs are actual reported BERTs to mothers in Weston. Um and that's where we're seeing that impact on the larger elementary cohorts coming in. Here. And even if we look at our low model and we assume that our birth decays are at all time lows. And that we have more out migration, it still doesn't overcome the fact that enrollment will increase in the elementary level.
Okay, it's it's just hard to rap.
Yeah, it's CDC's. They're they're referencing for, they're they're referencing fertility rates.
Well, they they use the word, I I I don't think they're using words interchangeably cuz certainly they're not interchangeably, but the report that I read. Uh used US birth rates and fertility, so I'm not sure if they've co mingled the numbers together.
Um I will say overall and I have a bit different perspective in having. I work across many Durg A, Durg B, as well as other districts throughout the state. Um we are seeing over the last several years, BERTs overall, especially in Durg A and Durg B districts are up. And BERTs statewide are down and BERTs statewide are down because. Large urban districts, BERTs are down there, but in smaller suburban districts in Connecticut, BERTs are up.
All right, then my last question is, uh so if BERT, but if birth rates are up. And our, right, we have a fixed housing market and it's unlikely to change unless something very peculiar happens and we wind up with high density housing. So we have a fixed uh uh number of homes and people, homes are not turning. And uh that doesn't look like there's any plans for that to change for the next couple of years at least. So does, is is when you talk about Durg A schools and for example. Wilton and Westport is seeing a major boom in construction and I think it's yet to be determined how many of those. Apartments wind up with children in them. Weston's not going to have that, so is, have you? I- in your charts or your numbers for Durg A schools, have you also factored in the uniqueness of Weston that our housing market is? Pretty, i- it's not changing significantly. I know you mentioned.
Yeah, you, yeah. Yeah, I only referenced those other Durg A and Durg B for the birth trends that we're seeing where. They had a lot of housing sales. Housing sales are down everywhere. Um even in Wilton and Weston, house, total housing sales are down overall. Um they are developing. They have less restrictive zoning. They. Have a better mix of housing types, um and they are getting some students out of there. In Weston, we recognize that it's largely single family, large lot and you're turning over much fewer. Homes than you have in recent past, then we modeled all of that downward. So all of our. Projections are modeled well below. What has happened over the last ten years and that includes the boom as well as the real bust that we've seen. So. Where our media model is a very modest one point two percent in migration. Very modest. Um our high is even at one point six. So that number directly relates to this estimate of migration, simply put, and there's a lot of other factors that go into it. But we're assuming that the last four years of the housing is gonna likely continue is where we're at. For the next three years, so we're, we're recognizing that there's limitations. Um and ability to bring in new families because of the housing conditions and that's reflected in the model.
Okay, a- and I'm just really trying to drill down on this because this is going to, as. Deb said at the top of our meeting, I don't know if you were with uh on at that time. We have a lot of work ahead of ourselves when it comes to our facilities, so these numbers. Are probably more critically important now than they've ever been because they're going to inform us. And the community on what we need to do with our facilities, so um that's why I'm sort of. Maybe picking a little bit deeper at this than years in the past.
Hmm, but thanks. And I think, David, what I would do and 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 as you're going through this process and I kind of say it every year is really kind of focus on. I'd focus on all three of these and say, can we, whatever we're proposing, can we survive the uncertainty that this. High, medium and low model is throwing out there at us, right? So where we're looking at a difference of, you know, two hundred students out at eight years. Um, you know. Factor eighteen, sixteen students per grade, plus or minus difference between the two different models. Does that make sense from our facilities decision? Cuz there's always gonna be uncertainty with projections. We're trying to like look at that trend and use all the best information that we can. But we understand too, I do facility planning. Um facilities survive the test of time for twenty, thirty, forty years. So even though we could only project and the state only gives us eight years to project the highest peak enrollment, we always advise to kind of use that. Different high, medium and low to say, can we test it out under all three of these situations and know that it works?
Right, Mike, I had, I had a question um looking at since you're, you've got page twenty seven pulled up. Um so from this, it looks like there are a couple more years of declining enrollment. Um, so from this, it looks like there are a couple more years of declining enrollment before it starts to turn around, and the turnaround is fairly slow.
Mm-hmm, you're correct, Dave.
Okay, alright.
And that's really, and, and, and this really does a good job of showing that. Um, especially where we began looking at those cohorts. So that really tells the tale of why we have that few more years of declining enrollment. Um, until we start to see some of those larger cohorts kind of work their way through.
Okay, so we could expect another three years or of declines?
Yes.
It's just, it's hard to line up the number.
Yeah.
With the year, so that's all, but that, that's just a minor point. Um, but as we get, you know, sort of deeper into some of the specifics about building capacities and planning for high, medium, low, uh, we'll, we'll, you know, um, we'll look at this again and we'll probably call you up.
I'm always there to answer questions. I'm glad to help.
Yeah, all right. Other, um, are there other questions from other board members?
So Mike, um, if you could go back to the age of our population. What your chart shows is that we have a higher age population. Did you take that into account as, let's say, the average age of life? That there's going to be a big turnover um, in the future when th- those homes are sold?
We, that would be well beyond the ten-year window that we can project, but I think that's something that we can look at this, this chart in particular and say, in the next twenty years, we're going to have individuals that are going to be looking to move up, probably move on from their current homes.
Yeah. Did you look at Mike, um, going to Lisa's point about age, that some people? Um, and again, this is just reading headlines, uh, the, the theory being that, um, people getting older don't really have any place to go, so they hold on to their houses longer. Is that part of what we're seeing?
Correct, and we are seeing that, and I think that aging in place in a given community, especially if they want to stay in Weston. It's going to be really challenging, and that may cause a lag in those that are hanging on to that larger, single-family home a bit longer. Because they don't want to move out of the community that they know.
Right, there's some of that, but there's also the, you know, there's some difficulty in finding suitable housing as well. Even if you wanted to leave, you know, do you, can you find a spot, a spot that you like?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, the, the housing market to me right now is very confusing. Um, okay.
I need clarification.
Yeah.
So I have a success story for the district. So let me have a few minutes here and give you my success story. Think this is a shout out to Tina. We hear, we want our kids to do better in math. So our kids go do better in math, especially middle school. God bless us, right? That's perfect. So what happens? Last year in Mr. Marone's seventh grade social studies class, a couple of kids that are pretty good in math do a little analysis on Mike Zewus' presentation. That was the assignment, and, and here it is, published in our district newsletter. Enrollment in housing in Weston. The correlation between housing and attractiveness, uh, enrollment and attractiveness of housing. And what do these smart math kids do in seventh grade? They looked at Mike's eighth grade chart, uh, page eight chart and said, guess what? When you sell a hundred fifty houses, you have an uptick in enrollment. When you sell a hundred twenty-five houses, you have a downtick in enrollment. So if you look at the numbers over a few years or a little bit of outliers, it's a hundred forty five, about a hundred forty-five, a hundred forty-six. But some years it's a little lower. This year, it turns out, we're on track for one twenty-three through this month, we'll probably do about one thirty. So what's the conclusion? This makes job, uh, Mike's job actually quite easy. In the, a couple of years, if you sell a hundred twenty-five houses, in a couple of years, you're going to have a little downtick. If you sell a hundred fifty houses, in a couple of years, you're going to have a little uptick. It's that simple. It boils down to that band, right? So what number have I been using for the last couple of years for enrollment? Two, two thousand fifty, plus or minus two point five percent. And we're with, well within that error band. Look at Mike's number. He is dead on for the next five years. It's twenty fifty, plus or minus two point five percent. And where do we get that two point five percent? If you sell twenty-five less houses, you lose two high schoolers, you gain, right, you don't replace them, you're down fifty. If you sell twenty-five more houses, you gain a couple of kindergartners, you're up fifty. It fits perfectly to all the curves. So the next five years, you're going to have twenty fifty, plus or minus a few kids. You sell a few more houses, you get plus a few kids. You have a few less houses, you get a few less kids. Now, we're limited to that band because of our stock. But think of what's happening around us. WIS, Blue Ribbon School, scores off the charts, high school third in the state. Mondani is a socialist. Everybody from New York is going to come to West, to Fairfield County. So we're going to go to one fifty. We're going to get a few extra kids because of all these factors. So I think Mike's dead on for the next five years, twenty fifty, plus or minus two point five percent. Uptick if we get one sixty, one seventy in a few years from now because of all the factors in our surrounding neighborhood. So I love that our seventh graders learned their math, and I like that Mike's dead on, and you can simplify it to that band of knowledge. You could take twenty-eight slides, you go down to your housing, and you get exactly the number you're going to have two years later, and I think it's exactly as reflected here. So I love this presentation. The numbers add up. They're perfectly add up. It's remarkable.
Tell those kids to send me resumes in like eight years from now, um.
Good idea.
What these kids predicted, what Mike came up with. So good for our seventh grader.
Yep.
Mike, want to hire a couple of seventh graders? It needed turnships.
I don't know if I can do that just yet, but in a few years, they can reach out, though.
Right, uh, any other comments?
I, I, I just have a few questions. Hey, Mike, um, good to see you again, and, and thanks for this, um. It's a, it's a hard job and predicting this, and so I, I appreciate you coming on and explaining this to us every year. Um, just a couple, couple of cool questions for me. Slide twenty-four. Um, tell me about the projection. So it looks like, I just, I'm just trying to understand because I was looking at last year's presentation and now I'm looking at this one. And the rates declined pretty, pretty, you know, significantly. Is that, is the driver in those rates declining, is that doing, is, is that driven by the net migration? Or what it, what, what, what is the driver of all three, basically across high, medium and low? If I take a look at last year's, and I gotta find it because I have a thousand tabs open up here. Last year, it looked like it was, we've, we've gone down from two point six to one point six in the high projections. Two point one to one point two, and then one point four to point six. Is that, is that driven by the net migration or what, what, what is the driver there?
That's, that's driven by a bunch of factors, net migration being one of them. Yeah, you're correct, um, absolutely. Um, it's housing as well, and then it's runoff of looking at, um, individual, individual grade progressions. So Weston historically grows as kids retriculate from kindergarten through twelfth grade. Um, over the last couple of years, we've now established a new trend where that's becoming much flatter, and we're actually seeing some outmigration. So we didn't go all in on the outmigration. Um, and what this does is this really, our first three, our next three years, not our first, our next three years of our projections are really tamped down because of the housing market, and then we slowly work our way back.
During, I mean, you said that, you said that you're carrying through sort of what we're seeing today in the, in the housing and the, and the migration, you're carrying that through over the next three to five years. You're not assuming any reversion to any mean, correct?
Exactly, for the next three years. By year, after year three, we're starting to see it get back to the historic average, not the pandemic boom or not. Um, you know, a boom of two hundred, as Peter mentioned, two hundred housing sales, it's getting back to um, you know, one sixty, one seventy sales or so.
Two, two more questions. Um, the first is, um, and, and you sort of touched on this, but how, how different is the, sort of the, the slope of this, of the, of the projections, right? The slope of sort of the growth rate here, how different is that as you look out five to ten years? From other Durg A districts, meaning are you also in other Durg A's predicting sort of, you know, this decline and then this rebound? Or because they have more housing stock, has been discussed by, by many people here before. Um, you, you know, you're not getting as much of a dip.
Yeah.
Within the short term, it's, it's, it's all, it's, it's moderating that dip, and, but you're still seeing that elevation due to births. Is that, is that fair?
Uh, it's a hard question. It's a very good question. Um, Weston is really kind of unique in that you have a very homogeneous housing market, right?
Yeah.
And you, and you have no new starts. Um. The commonality is that births are up really since twenty twenty.
Right.
Um, on average, right? You'll have some higher and lower years, natural birth cycles. Um, but that's kind of where it begins to kind of stop where we're seeing the commonalities between you and maybe some of your neighbors, right? Um, you know, Darian, and I'm going to be there next week, so I won't provide too much of a spoiler. They saw a negative outmigration, um, to a level this year that they haven't seen in a long time.
Okay.
Um, Westport is still seeing positive in migration. Still.
Right.
Un- unfazed, like, not, housing sales are down, right, don't can confuse the two there. Housing sales are down, they have some housing starts, they have some new development going in, they have some developments of scale going in. Um, you know, and, and Wilton, who is a little bit of a blend between the two of you, be you like Westport a little bit. Um, and has some new housing that has been going in. Um, you know, their turnover and their in-migration is lower over the last two years. So, um, you know, they were one of those that we revised downward as well. So everybody's a little bit unique. I think in Weston, it becomes more of, uh, your range of where you're going to get off of that cone of uncertainty isn't that great, right? So if you're really looking at like, where we historically project data there, and I put it towards the back of the slide deck. Um, you, this was really the first time where our trajectory showed in a belly. Um, otherwise pandemic, no pandemic going back to twenty, I think this goes back to twenty seventeen or so is the data I had back to. You know, you've all been in this kind of range here. Um, and then when you look ahead, especially with the births that we're, we're tracking. Um, you're, you're getting back up to that sort of, you know, trajectory that our long-term projections have been on. Um, this real downturn in the immigration has caused that belly right there. But when you look at like building projects, construction, long-term facility planning, you know, you got a lead time of five years plus there. You know, that's where you start to get back on track. So I, you know, I would really kind of say like, it's great that you're looking at other communities. Um, but also like within your own community, it's like really understanding like those drivers, and I think as a board, you really get it well. Um, what are our enrollment drivers? You guys know them. That, that's great for your decision-making because you know, as you're going through these conversations, you have to, you're in tune, you live there, you um, you understand what's happening in your local community, so it's really kind of getting into that and making informed decisions, so.
Yeah, no, well, I mean, things like this help, right? Actually going through this every year.
Yeah.
Um, my last question is slide twenty-seven. So in slide twenty-seven again, uh, look, I'm just looking, again, I know this is, this is, this is a, a difficult business. Um, when I look at slide twenty-seven again, just looking at last, like comparing it to last year. So last year, I assume we had, you know, we weren't that far off in terms of when I look at births. It looks like births have picked up. At least according to your charts, a little bit from, from last year to this year. Which, which that adds a little bit of, of course, um, uplift in the later years. When I look at this, I guess in the, in the first five years, it looks like we're still trending, you know, pretty significantly down, I would say. So if you look at it, the high, the high of this year is below last year's medium. And last, and last, and this year's medium is essentially last year's low.
At, at the five-year mark.
Right, at the five-year mark.
Yeah.
Right.
Exactly.
And I assume last year, I don't know that the environment was much different. Again, we have another year of con, you know, confirming sort of it's a slow housing market, it's a continuation, right? And then I'm assuming we have more or less, it looks like births have picked up a little bit, right, from last year.
Yeah.
So, so what is? What is driving that? I- if, if, again, if some of those inputs, let's say, are relatively where they were last year. Again, it's another year of those, I get it. But what is driving the, you know, the variance there? That, and, and I, I, I know it's multifactorial and everything else, but.
Yeah, I got your question.
Yeah, got it.
It's the diff, so the difference between the low and the high is, is a hundred and thirty students, it's ten students per grade, over five years. So when we look at where we performed this year, right? Um, and our grade-to-grade variation, we pro- we had projected that we would have slight growth in first grade. We had no growth in first grade. So we have a delta of seven students, and you look, start to look at just this one-year delta, right? And they're all towards the negative side. Um, and you think about that compounding, comparing my prior projection with this projection. That's what's really driving that delta in that first five-year window.
As those classes are propagating through and they're replacing larger classes.
Yeah, it, and it's we have smaller cohorts moving through, we have graduating one seventy, and we're not seeing the growth that we would typically see in some of these hundred and thirty-five, hundred and forty, right? Because these would normally be cohorts that over the last couple of years have been growing a lot more. They're not growing a lot more.
Okay.
Right, and then in high school, you start to lose that growth factor, right? Parents are more apt to move with students of younger age and school-aged children. We have higher persistency ratios for elementary and middle school than we do for high school.
Sure.
Um, so when we look at that five-year window, um, and the change of projections, it's really coming down to just the immigration, um. And that, and that, that compounds from year to year, but in the grand scheme of things, when you look at it and you think about facility planning, it's literally, and ten students per grade between all three models. So those differences that I talked about earlier in in-migration, right? Of one point six versus point six, right? So a full percentage point there.
Yeah.
Is a difference of a hundred and thirty students.
Yeah.
Or ten students per grade.
How, um, how hard is it, Mike, last question, sorry. Um, how hard is it, sort of, you know, I think a lot of the out-years now, especially this rebound. Right, in, in the school population. Um, how hard is it to pro- to project? You know, even if you see elevated birth rates today, that, that, that those are actually going to materialize into, let's say, future students in the town, because there's a lot riding, I think, on um, the, the birth rate projections here. And those students obviously being a part of, you know, the school system. So how do you, how do you, how do you work that through, Mike?
Um, well, our, our K projections are a little bit more complicated. We do have a
Yeah.
Uh, we do do a variable birth decay, but what I would say and encourage is take a whoop, and I'm going to drive everybody nuts here. These are your actual birth decays.
Hmm.
Pick any one of these and multiply it by a hundred births. Right, we know we have a hundred births in twenty twenty-four, so that class of twenty-nine, right? Um, even if you were to pick the most pessimistic ones, and you can't really go back here because those aren't historically valid. So you look at the last ten years. And you say, even if we have the lowest level of in-migration, which really the birth decay captures, right? And we have some outmigration of those children that were born in town. Um, you know, that hundred's going to turn in, in worst case, a hundred and fifty, right?
Right, if you go back to the low, I see that one fifty, but if you're looking at the last ten years, you're saying it's, you know, let's call it one eighty, one ninety, I don't know, something like that.
Yeah, and so we have those built in here, and I would just say, look at them, and like, these are using a much lower birth decay and lower birth numbers. You can begin to go through and kind of test out where those numbers from a planning standpoint will likely lie, but Where those numbers from a planning standpoint will likely lie, but. We don't have a tremendous amount of variability. In enrollment drivers in Weston, so you don't have a lot of variability. In what we're projecting for K and what we're projecting for the grade levels. It's not a tremendously. It's not a tremendously dynamic housing market here, right?
Yeah. Say the least. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think in the interest of time, um, and also knowing how important this information is. And knowing that we are scheduling additional Board of Ed meetings. Uh, to talk about facilities. Um, we are probably gonna be looking at enrollment projections yet again. And Mike, I appreciate your availability. And um, I thank everyone who's asked questions tonight. But I think as we get deeper, diving deeper and deeper, I think it it deserves to be attached to the facilities discussion. More specifically, uh, and then we can get even more technical. Uh, but for now, are there any more generalized kind of questions? All right, um, Mike, thank you very, very much for this presentation and we'll have you on speed dial um, as we. I get into the facilities, uh, nuts and bolts. So thank you.
All right. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, um. Uh, the next under new business is the, uh, report on the class of twenty twenty-five. It sounds like great news and um, I'll let um, Megan or Erica uh, introduce.
Sure, thank you. Um, it's my pleasure to introduce the Weston High School team presenting the class of two thousand twenty-five statistical report. Which is an annual analysis that highlights our students' post-secondary outcomes. Their standardized testing results and college application trends. Um, joining us this evening are Megan Canetta, Principal of Weston High School. Meredith Jackson, Director of School Counseling, and Randy Green, um, the College and Career Counselor. Um, the high school counseling team plays an essential role in guiding students. Through an increasingly complex and competitive college admissions process. Their work begins well before senior year with programming that supports students' academic and personal growth as early as ninth grade. Through individual counseling counseling sessions, classroom-based lessons, and family presentations and outreach. They help students build awareness, plan thoughtfully, and navigate each stage of the high school experience with confidence and purpose. By the time students reach the college application stage, they are supported by a coordinated team effort. One that balances data-informed guidance with deep personal insight into each student's aspirations and their strengths. This layered approach is reflected in the strong outcomes you are going to hear about this evening. And also speaks to the exceptional dedication of our counselors and our College and Career Office. So tonight, they're gonna provide an overview of the academic profile, the standardized testing results. Advanced place, advanced placement performance and college application and matriculation data. The purpose of this report is not only to celebrate all of our students' achievements. But also identify meaningful trends that inform how we continue to build and strengthen our programs and supports. So if you could just hold your questions until the end of the presentation to allow the team to share the full context of their findings, we would greatly appreciate it. And please join me in welcoming Ms. Canetta, Ms. Jackson, and Ms. Green as they present the class of two thousand twenty-five statistical report.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for having us. Uh, we're excited to share some of the good news uh, coming out of Weston High School with the class of twenty twenty-five. And for some of this information, um, when we think, talk about AP scores, it's also going to reflect. On the class of uh, twenty twenty-six as well, twen- yes. Um, so I'll start with the first second slide, Dan, if you wanna. Um, continue, just to a snapshot of the demographic information for the class of twenty twenty-five. Um, so we continue to uh, grow in our diversity, as you can see. Um, and so just a little, we've started reporting on our demographics in this report. I believe this is our second year. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to uh, Meredith. Jackson, our Director of School Counseling, um, and she will be followed by Randy Green. And they'll give you some information on um, our School Links program that we've been using. Um, and some overall feedback from our students uh, through the college process in terms of their post-secondary um, accomplishments. So. Meredith, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you.
You can advance aside. Great.
Thanks. So I want to briefly start the presentation talking about School Links. This is our second year using the program. Um, the next slide shows our usage of this program. Um, and when Randy and I meet with our representative quarterly from School Links, he always tells us how impressed he is. With our student and parent usage. Um, he's based in Texas. Um, and he just says, he's very, you know, interested in how many students are using our program and he's very proud that we are using it to its fullest. Um, for those of you who are not familiar with School Links, um, this is our electronic tool for. Post-secondary planning that we use with students and that parents and guardians have access to. In School Links, students will complete surveys, interest inventories, investigate careers. Research colleges that possibly relate to the careers that they liked along the way. And ultimately is the tool that we use to send materials for students, i.e. transcripts and letters of recommendation. To the colleges that they select. The next slide is just a screenshot of what the students see. It's called a college application manager. So this helps the students stay organized when they're filling out and completing all of their applications. It also lets them know from our side at Weston High School when we have submitted our documents. So on the left-hand side, you can see the schools that the student has added to their list. There's a student checklist box in that can be green, um, if they did the task that's required of them. The next column is for teacher recs. So there's a recommendation. When you see those green checks, you can see that your letters have been submitted by your teacher. And then counselor documents. This will include the transcript and the letter of recommendation that your counselor will provide for you. It also lists due dates and then the status. So is it pending? Have we submitted anything yet? Um, in that area. So that kind of helps the students gauge their progress in School Links. The next slide is an example of our events section. This is our college rep visit schedule. Um, we have over a hundred colleges that visit Weston High School every fall. Actually, last week, we just wrapped it up for the fall season. Juniors and seniors have the opportunity to meet with college rep visits in our College and Career Center. And we tell them that the majority of time, the person who's coming to this visit. Is most likely the person who's gonna be reading your application because they are our area rep. So it's a great way for our students to meet with these college rep visits and meet with the representatives and have a name with a face. Um, when they're doing their applications. So this is a screen in the area that they can see the calendar and also where to register. So next, I want to talk a little bit about our senior exit survey. So our senior exit survey is something that we give out to a graduating class every year. To kind of get feedback on a temperature on the college process. Um, so the next slide will show you one of our first questions. We had a hundred and seventy-nine students reply to our survey. So the first one is, were you admitted to one of your top choice colleges? And so if you can see, yes, no, or NA, we had eighty-eight point three percent of students. Who indicated they applied to college, got into one of their top colleges. So definitely a really high percentage for those yeses. Next question was about level of enthusiasm for the college they'll be attending. So if you see uh, one not excited at all, five being thrilled. If you look at the bottom, you can see our percentages. Um, we had five saying they were most excited and four saying very excited. So of those who indicate they'll be attending college, that means eighty-nine percent of the students rated most are very excited about their destination. And this is a statistic that we are very proud of. You know, um, that so many students are happy about the school they will be attending, which we all know is the most important factor. The next slide shows a question about priorities in selecting a school to apply. So as you can see, the top three priorities that these students um, responded to saying was very important for them. Was academic programming, good to hear. Uh, location was also a high one. As well as social fit. So it's good to hear that our students are thinking about. Fit when they're looking at their schools and how they're gonna be comfortable on a campus. Of note, I do find it interesting that of these responses, academic prestige is a little higher. Than students caring about total cost. So just of note, I thought that was a little bit interesting to see that they, you know, care a little bit more about the prestige of the school versus how much they're paying. The next question on the next slide is the stress of the process. So we want to maintain and see how manageable students felt this process was. Okay, we talked about, we hear about the stress of applying to colleges in the college application process. So we asked students how manageable it was, one being not manageable at all and five being very manageable. So as you can see from the results in the bottom left-hand corner, over eighty percent of the students of the class found it manageable. And then the next slide shows how the counseling department tries to help students manage this process. So we have Camp College. For those of you who are not aware of this program, we have eighty students. Who come to school in the month of August for three straight days. And they go through the whole Common Application. We have admission reps come in and speak to them. We have English teachers come in and read their essays. And we go over a lot of other information that's really essential for them to know in the application process. So when they start school, they are in a great shape for the application process. And if you think about eighty students, that's close to half of the class. We also have, um, what you heard about before, individual post-secondary meetings. Um, that's usually with the counselor and with Ms. Green. Um, we do lessons in PACT. Our website has been updated by Ms. Green. She has a lot of wealth of information on there. She's got a digital guidebook. That pretty much walks every student through every screenshot of the Common App and School Links and what they need to do. Um, also, we had the junior college kickoff that the students mentioned earlier in the meeting. Um, we actually moved that up this year. We actually just had it um, in November. We usually had it in December, but we decided to move it up. Just because we feel like more and more families would like some information sooner. We also do a financial aid night every fall as well as some parent coffees. Um, and we also do some drop-ins in the fall during uh, flex time for PACT. Um, so that is. The senior response survey. And at this point, I'm gonna turn it back to Principal Canetta to talk about standardized testing.
Thanks, Meredith. So I'm gonna take you through the um, scores from the class of twenty twenty-five. Um. And the, we're going to start with the SAT School Day. Uh, summary. So you can see for the class of twenty twenty-five, the uh, they took the March SAT School Day in. Uh, March of twenty twenty-four. So our students take the SAT School Day test in their junior year and this is um. The state assessment uh, for the high school. Uh, you can see that our scores were consistent over um, the last couple of years. Um, and we continue to look and evaluate those scores. Dan, if you want to go to the next slide, that would be great. Um, this is our SAT cohort summary of our three-year trend. Um, this reflects um, the last score that uh, the last SAT uh, score that students took. Um, because as you know, students take the school base, school day SAT and then they can take the SAT numerous times. Um, as they continue to prepare for their post-secondary um, applications. So those are the scores um, outside of the SAT School Day. And keep going. Okay, um, these are our scores from the class of twenty twenty-five S, um, ACT data. Um, and so this data is pulled from an online reporting portal, which provides an average score for each student in the class of twenty twenty-five. And then we um, turn to our AP exams. Uh, this is from May of twenty twenty-five. So overall, uh, we had um, our students. Uh, who scored a three or higher. Uh, we had ninety-three percent of our students taking the AP exams who scored a three or higher. On the um, AP tests. Uh, so this is a slight improvement, uh, three percent from the previous year. Um, you'll also note um, in the um, AP scores that we had sixty-seven AP scholars in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We had forty-one AP scholars with honors. Seventy-two AP scholars with distinction and one AP uh, diploma student as well. So there you can see that reflected in that graphic, the number of students um, who had scores of three or higher. And we've also noticed um, just some trends in our AP scores as well. Um, with our AP two-D class, we had sixty-three percent of our students score a four or five. I won't take you through all of the AP scores. But these are just some things um, to take note of. Um, our AP Lang students, seventy-eight percent of our students scored a four or five. Eighty perc- eighty-five percent of students in AP Lit um, scored a four or five, which is one of the highest numbers in years over time. Um, AP Calc AB, seventy-four percent of students scored a four or five compared to the state average of fifty-five percent of students. Scoring a four or five. And AP Calc BC, we had ninety-five percent of our students scoring a four or five compared to sixty-nine percent in the state. Um, and and the numbers continue. AP Chem, we had ninety-one percent of our students scoring a four or five. Um, AP Physics, we've more than doubled the number of students um, taking AP Physics over the last uh, five years since twenty twenty. AP uh, AP Physics, yes, we doubled the number of students scoring a five since twenty twenty in our AP Statistics course. Um, and also we've seen a rising interest in students taking uh, micro and macro um, AP Econ as well. Um, so we're really interested to see uh, those numbers growing. Um, Human Geo, our enroll, AP Human Geography, our enrollment has doubled since twenty twenty-one. With seventy-eight percent of students scoring a four or five. Um, and our AP Gov enrollment really continues to climb with ninety percent of students scoring a four or five. So. We're we're really happy to see um, those scores um, over over time and especially over the last couple of years. So congratulations to all of our teachers and instructors of those AP courses. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Randy Green, who is our College and Career um, Counselor. Um, who has a wealth of knowledge um, regarding our college outcomes. So Randy, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thanks, Megan. Um, okay, so if we go to the next slide, Dan. So. These are our application statistics from the class of twenty twenty-five. And um, you don't have it in front of you, but I have the data from the class of twenty twenty-four as well. And there are a few things that I think are really notable here. Um, our application numbers went up by five percent. So the class of twenty twenty-four submitted um. Eighteen hundred and thirty-one applications and this class submitted nineteen twenty-two, which represented a five percent increase. Um, and we saw a decrease in the acceptances. Um, it, but we didn't really see. A significant decrease um, or increase rather in denials or rejections. So historically, um, it was a. Last year, it was a twenty-six percent denial rate and this year it was twenty-seven percent. Where we saw the greatest increase was in waitlists. Um, and this actually matches uh, national trends. So colleges are really um. Nervous and uncertain and trying to protect their yield, the number of students who opt to enroll in their school. And we're seeing them use waitlists at a much higher rate. Um, so. This really mirrors what we're seeing nationally. You know, I think the other interesting thing to note here. Is that last year, so well, the class of twenty twenty-four rather. The average number of applications per student that they submitted um, was nine. And now, and before that, it was about seven or seven point five. And now our average student is submitting eleven point six applications. And again, this correlates with national data. So the Common Application, which is the application that most colleges in the country that our students apply to, not all, but most. Use to apply to college, they reported their data for last year's um, the class of twenty twenty-five's application process. And the colleges on the Common App saw a six percent increase overall on average. In the number of applications and they also saw a four percent increase in the. in the number of applications. And they also saw a four percent increase in the individual, um, applicants using the Common App. So as we see this increase in applications, when colleges aren't increasing their incoming class, um, we see acceptance rates go down, colleges lean on their waitlist a little bit more. Sometimes the wait, these waitlists are going until Janu-, um, July rather, until, um, they close them out and finish rounding out their class. So I think our numbers are really consistent with what we're seeing. And, you know, I think it's really important for us to be thinking about what this means for our students. As they're submitting more and more applications, the application process, for those of you who have not yet been through it with a child, can be really nuanced and it has a lot of components, often requiring multiple essays, sometimes self-reported grades, self-reported or official test scores, sometimes interviews, sometimes multiple applications depending on the institution that the students, um, are applying to. So I think we need to be thinking about, as our students are applying to more and more schools and experiencing more waitlists. So a lot of that uncertainty, what can we do to help support them, make this process as efficient as possible? Um, but also supporting them emotionally and building on those skills of resilience, um, as they deal with waitlists that could stretch out through the summer. Um, I think we really need to be thinking about some of those things. And as Meredith mentioned, um, one of the things we did this year, as we see that more and more of our students are applying in November to colleges, we have a little bit, um, of a drop-off, right? We sort of finish up with our seniors a little bit earlier than we used to. So we did move the junior college kickoff up to November and we've already started having our post-secondary planning meetings with our junior class. Those typically started in, uh, January in previous years. But I, I started having those last week because we want to give students more time. This process is burdensome. It can be stressful. We see that students don't find it particularly manageable. So we're trying to give them as much time and access to the resources at our high school as possible. So that's how we're responding to some of this. And if we look at the next slide, these were just some interesting trends. Um, you know, I like to dig deep into our data and see what's going on from year to year. And so one thing we're seeing nationally, again, as colleges are trying to predict their yield, the, a lot of, um, private schools, but now even a trend in public universities are leaning on early decisions. So that binding agreement that students make when they apply, where they guarantee that they'll attend the school if they get in, more and more colleges are leaning on early decision to protect their yield. And, you know, our students are taking advantage of it. So thirty-eight point five percent of the graduates from the class of two thousand and twenty-five applied through either ED one and/or Early Decision Two to colleges. And of the seventy-one percent of students who applied through Early Decision, fifty-three point five percent were admitted. And that's up from thirty-one percent in two thousand and twenty-four. That's a huge increase. And I think that speaks to the trend we're seeing in colleges leaning on early decision. Whether or not we feel like this is ethical or fair to students to have to commit upfront, that's a conversation that's going on a lot. Um, there are people who are trying to file lawsuits against colleges who lean too heavily on early decision. But we see that our students are getting that memo and taking advantage of the early decision, um, opportunity. So, um, another really interesting thing this year, um, was that twelve students from the graduating class of two thousand and twenty-five took gap years. And they were for different reasons, but I think this speaks to the fact that students are really either exploring their unique interests or taking the time. There were, you know, just three students of those twelve did enroll in four-year colleges and took a formal gap year from those schools to do something really cool and interesting. Two of them are stuck like abroad right now. There's another student who, um, was pursuing, um, kind of pre-professional soccer, um, abroad as he was looking to get recruited. And that's another student. And then there were a few students who just said they really weren't ready and their parents were very understanding. And with the rising cost of college tuition, felt like they didn't want to push their student when they weren't ready. Um, and so we've seen some parents encouraging that as well. A bunch of those students have already reached out to us to submit transcripts to colleges. So it looks like they are in the process of applying to four-year schools now, um, but they just weren't ready when they graduated. Nine students enrolled in institutions outside the United States. That's up from five in the previous year. Um, four of those were to McGill in Canada. And for those of you who know, um, it's a significantly less expensive, um, cost of attendance in Canada. And if you have Canadian citizenship, you pay about eight thousand dollars a year in tuition to go there. So that incentivized a couple of our students to take advantage of that. And then as we look at the colleges that have four or more students enrolling, um, UConn, right, always at the top of the list, our flagship state school, University of Vermont, University of Colorado Boulder, Virginia Tech, Michigan, Syracuse and McGill. So a lot of the flagship state schools are in there. And then Syracuse is a private institution and McGill as an international institution were sort of, um, the most attended schools among the class. And if we go to the next slide, so just some unique pursuits. Um, you know, we love looking at the data and seeing where some of our kids are really pursuing their dreams. Um, so we have a student who's attending the Berklee College of Music, another one who is at the Johns Hopkins Peabody Institute, which is their music conservatory. Um, we have a student who is at Lincoln Tech, um, pursuing plumbing. Um, he actually shadowed some of our custodial staff last year and, and was just really interested and knew exactly what he wanted. We have a student at, um, NYU, one of the top film schools in the country, another student at NYU Shanghai. So he'll do his entire four-year program, um, in Shanghai, which is very cool. We have a student who's doing the, um, Columbia University offers dual degree programs with a couple of other institutions in other countries. And this student is doing the Columbia University and Trinity College Dublin Dual Degree Program. Um, we have students, um, who are, um, enlisted in the military, the United States Navy and the Marine Corps. And then that professional soccer gap year that I had mentioned. So those are just a couple of unique things that our students were doing that I thought were pretty notable. And then the next slide, um, is just a link to our matriculation list, um, which I think the board might have a copy of in the, um, in the statistical report. Um, and so I just think that, you know, I want to highlight here that despite the fact that kids, right, we, we see the anxiety in, in the sheer volume of applications students are submitting. You know, roughly twelve applications per student. It's high. Um, we know a lot of students are getting waitlisted. But that said, I just want to say that I think it's really pretty extraordinary. Last year, eighty-seven percent, or in two thousand and twenty-four, rather, eighty-seven percent of students, um, indicated that they got into one of their top choice schools and then it was up to eighty-eight point three percent this year. And in two thousand and twenty-four, um, eighty-four percent of students had rated a four or five for the level of enthusiasm for the college to which they're going to be attending. And this year it was eighty-nine percent. So our kids are really excited about where they're going. And I know that often there can be a lot of chatter about the most selective colleges or the Ivies. And I think kids understand that these schools with acceptance rates hovering around four percent are getting less and less attainable. And they're still really excited about the schools that they're ending up at. And that's what we need to celebrate and focus on as a community. So I think that wraps up our part of the presentation.
Thank you, Randy and Meredith.
Yeah, yes, thank you. And thank you for sticking, uh, this late at night, um, and showing so much enthusiastic, enthusiasm in spite of how tired you must be. Uh, but this is such a good news report. Um, are there comments from the board?
I have comments, if I may ask, Randy and Meredith. You know, uh, I, I was wondering if you actually, uh, collate intended majors. What are kids thinking when they enter freshman year or they declare their major? Because if you work backwards, maybe we can tailor our programming around those cohorts, right? So that's, that'd be an interesting data point to have in the future, what their intended majors are. Second question I had was particularly since the kids are going to sort of top flight, but large, uh, state schools. Let's say they have a thousand kids in freshman biology. How many of those kids either intended or actually went through with applying to the honors college at these universities where they have smaller cohorts and specialized classes for those high achiever go-getters? So I thought honors college would be an interesting recommendation for a lot of kids going to state schools. And then how many kids take advantage of the New England tuition break? We have a couple of kids going to Vermont. I don't see them going to New Hampshire, Rhode Island, Mass, Maine. But what a great way of limiting your expense, right? Cause you, you get a considerable discount. That seems to have to be promoted that, you know, you can still study finance at UMass, but save, you know, half your tuition. So these are my inputs for the season.
Thanks, Peter. I can, um, take some of those. So, um, before, okay, so the honors program, I'll tackle that one first. So honors programs are a great opportunity for a student to become part of a smaller, um, cohort, often with really great opportunities presented to them, right? Whether that's, um, you know, smaller seminar-type courses, um, first pick at internships, networking events. Often it comes with a scholarship, maybe honors housing. Um, at many schools, not all, at many schools, students don't need to apply to be part of the honors program. They're automatically considered for that simply based on the strength of their application. So UConn is a really great example. As long as a student applies by November first, they're automatically considered for the honors program. The same holds true at the University of Vermont. Um, there are a few caveats, like Penn State has a really rigorous process to apply for their honors program. I've actually in twenty years never had a student get into the Penn State honors program. Um, and I've worked in four different high schools. It's really, really, um, interesting and selective. But, um, you know, so the, the interesting thing is we don't know, in many institutions, kids are automatically being considered for the honors program. So I can't always say how many were accepted, right? Cause every student who applied was considered. Um, so we don't really have a percent there. Anecdotally speaking, because not a lot of our students report whether or not they opted to pursue an honors program. And it's an interesting question that we could definitely add to our senior exit survey information. Cause the colleges, when they give us the acceptance data, they often don't include that the student was admitted to an honors program. Um, but I will say, like, we've had a lot of students get into honors programs with a scholarship and still, um, turn it down, if I'm being very honest, for a college that was more selective to get into. So I do still think that many of our students, um, or families prefer to get into the most competitive school that they can, not always, but sometimes. And will turn down some of their honors, um, program opportunities. That's not to say we haven't had students take advantage of it. We've had students go to the University of Vermont, which has awesome honors dorms. Um, I've had students be part of the honors program at Northeastern, which is really competitive. Um, you know, University of South Carolina has one of the best honors programs in the country. Alabama's got this really cool specialized honors program. So I hope more of our students do take advantage of it. If they're gonna go to these large public universities, right? Um, they could definitely look for those opportunities. I don't think as many of our students take advantage of them, um, as you might think. And then the other, what was your first question again? Remind me about that one.
Intended majors.
Most popular major.
Get my list out.
Yeah, the most popular major is actually undecided, um, for incoming students. And, and that's like, okay, a lot of our students do look at business programs, um, and many engineering programs as well. Um, and then psychology, I think those are the three that we usually hear the most from our students when they are kind of on a direct path would be psychology, business and engineering. We don't hold kids to that because the same way the colleges report out that about eighty percent of students change their major once they're there. So I think, um, a lot of our students are, you know, we talked about the increased interest in macroeconomics and microeconomics. And I think that aligns with the business focus. Our PLTW classes, there's always students pursuing those for many times, all four years. That I think aligns with engineering. Um, and we have a really high enrollment in AP Psychology too. So I think those things, I think kids are pursuing those. That's what they're being exposed to the most in high school. I don't know if Meredith or Megan have.
Yeah, I think all I was gonna say is even though, like you said, they know they changed their mind a lot, we could still add that to the senior exit survey just to get some anecdotal information.
And then lastly, the question, we talked about major honors program, oh, and the tuition break program. So the tuition break program, and for those people who don't know, in New England, the public university system, there are, um, tuition agreements across the institutions. And students from other states, if their state schools don't offer a particular major and they enroll in that major at another state school, they get a really significant break in the out-of-state tuition rate. So they end up paying something closer to like their in-state tuition rate if they had stayed in Connecticut. Um, if you were to go on to, there is the, um, like Connecticut Tuition Break, I mean, the New England Tuition Break website, you could click and search. It's really interesting. You have to indicate the state that you are from. And then it lists within the other states which majors you can pursue at specific schools in order to qualify for that tuition break. So students really have to know what they want to major in. And it often needs to be a major that we don't offer in the Connecticut state system. So I, I, I think a student pursued it at UMass Boston from the class of two thousand and twenty-three um, and ended up paying about nineteen thousand dollars was her tuition. Um, but I don't know of any students off the top of my head from the class of two thousand and twenty-five who indicated that they pursued that.
All right, well, all feeds together, right? You, you have your intended major. You look at, you know, honors at University of New Hampshire and save a bunch of money. And everyone's happy.
I think another cost-saving thing that a lot of families should think about too is that, um, and many people may know this and many people may not. But community college is free for Connecticut residents in the state of Connecticut, as long as a student fills out the FAFSA. But they don't have to meet a certain, um, you know, financial threshold to qualify. So a student can go to community college for free here and then transfer to another school. There's actually legislation that they're trying to pass where, but it hasn't passed yet. Um, but if a student completes a full two years at a community college, that they could segue into the Connecticut state system and do their last two years tuition-free. Room and board wouldn't be free, but they're trying to get four-year free tuition if a student does a full two years and then their last two years in the Connecticut public system. So there are, you know, opportunities within our state. And there's also a number of SUNY schools. So there are sixty-four State University of New York schools. And many of them will match the Connecticut in-state tuition rate if a student enrolls in one of their schools. So a student can pursue a degree in a New York state school and pay what they would pay to go to UConn. Um, Maine offers that as well and they stack that with merit scholarships. There are really a lot of great opportunities in the Northeast for our students to, you know, lower the cost of attendance for college.
All right, thank you. That's good messaging.
That's great. Uh, any other questions, comments?
I'll just quickly jump in. I have a son who is graduating two thousand and twenty-six. So I just went through this process and it is a highly personalized, uh, journey, which Randy Green, as well as Ariel Luxberg, really helped my son and my family navigate. So to Peter's point, which I think talked a little bit about cost, enrollment, uh, curriculum, honors classes. This is a highly personalized process and where you start, if, for example, your junior year where we start giving it some thought and where you end, it is not a straight line. And you can only get there with the help of Randy and the guidance counselors, your parents, and personal preference on the point of our, of our kids, right? Our kids' success, they're seventeen years old, eighteen years old. They don't know, they need guidance. So my experience where it started junior year for my son, where we thought he was going to go and where he wound up doing early decision, uh, I wouldn't say completely different, but, uh, definitely different. And he is quite happy. And he is, um, he's put this behind him, which is also good for our children, our students who do early decision because they can focus the rest of this semester on keeping up their grades and next semester on goofing off.
I know we talk a lot about enrollment. I think one of the benefits of having a small high school, right? Is that we do get to know our students so well. And, um, it's, it's the benefit of being able to sit with families and have group meetings with the counselor and me and the parents on many occasions to try to get through this process and, and really keep it student-focused. So that's definitely one of the benefits of being in a small community like Weston.
And I think from your presentation, the quality of the, um, the attention, the knowledge base that you bring to it, um, is just exceptional. So, um, and that's come through loud and clear tonight. Uh, I think Weston students are incredibly lucky to have all the support that you're offering and all your expertise. Uh, I think Weston students are incredibly lucky to have all the support that you're offering and all your expertise.
I I'm gonna, two, two seconds, I'm gonna agree with that completely. I have a son who was a part of the class of twenty twenty-five. And um, his uh application process, the whole thing, you guys made it exceptionally manageable for him. Um, and he was one of those students that applied early decision and is absolutely thrilled. He found out in early December. And uh, he is as happy as a clam right now um at the school that he chose. And 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 I thank you guys for all that you did to help him with that process, because it's not always the easiest. Each student is very different. And to David's point, it's a very unique um journey for each student, and you really helped to point him in the right direction. And um, yeah, it's worked out really well for for our family. So thank you for all your help.
Um, I I have um one question. Um, it's just a suggestion. I just wonder, is there any way of following these kids into their freshman year and getting some feedback as to how they thought Weston High School prepared them? Um, anecdotally, I think we always hear, you know, it's been wonderful. But I just wonder, and I don't mean to pile on, but if there was a way of tracking some of the kids at least through their freshman year and getting some sort of feedback, you know, how'd you feel in your first math class? Or, you know, how was the reading load? That sort of thing. It would be great just to hear, um, you know, just a sense of um what they thought their high school, you know, provided for them.
Yeah, and school links, um, when students graduate, they enter an area of school links called alumni. So we do retain all of their information. And we do like to cut, we do actually get their personal emails upon graduation, because we know their student emails go away. So we do have the access to send out surveys to our graduates. Um, also something that we're going to be looking into, um, school links also partners with the National Clearinghouse. And so we were looking into possibly adding that feature to school links, so we can see how many students graduate in four to six years after graduating from Weston High School. We think that would be good data to have as well.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, any other questions, comments?
Um, just quickly, uh, Deb, that was a good question. I had something similar and you stole it, but that was a great question. Um, really quickly, so um Meredith, when I was looking through the numbers, I was looking through what happened last year as well. It does seem like, which is interesting, prestige actually of the institution dropped in priority from forty-eight percent to forty, which I thought was interesting. So that's material. And then total cost actually increased in priority from twenty-nine percent to thirty-six. So I think there's there's some of that coming through there, given the huge expense of college. Um, my one question is for you, Randy. Um, thanks for going over those, you know, those year-over-years, because I noticed those as well, the sixty-four percent to fifty-two percent, the acceptances, when the denials were constant, et cetera, et cetera. Um, my one question is, it looked like on a year-over-year basis, there were, there were fewer total different number of schools applied to. So can you talk to to that a little bit? Because what I've heard, again, anecdotally is, again, it's not just Weston, surrounding towns, right? Where it's, you have forty kids from a, from a class applying to Providence College, and two or three are going to get in. So can you talk about sort of how you're guiding, you know, what the students are thinking, how you're guiding the students, and sort of are you encouraging them to look beyond the, you know, typical Northeast schools, let's say, that everyone else is applying to?
Yeah, I noticed that too, right? I think it went to like the, the number of unique colleges was like three hundred and six down from three hundred and forty or something.
Yeah, it was three forty-seven to three oh nine, right?
Okay, I was not accurate. I keep a lot up here, but not everything. But but yeah, I noticed that too. And I was like, ah, how can we do better, right? Because the reality is our kids are submitting so many applications, but they're submitting them to the same schools, right? And so we're seeing a lot of overlap and um, we definitely try, right? So um, and you know, it's, it's great. Megan has, you know, I, so when I worked at previous high schools, I went on a lot of college fly-ins and schools would fly me to see their campus, get to know their different campuses. And then after COVID, that sort of like died down a little bit, and more and more schools are starting to, you know, invite me to these programs to see their schools. Megan's been supportive of it. In January, I'm going to see Embry-Riddle, right, which is an aeronautical college in Daytona Beach. Um, and so I think we really try, right? We try to explore unique options. We try to encourage families to read books, you know, like the Colleges That Change Lives and the new Dream School book that just came out by Jeff Selengode, to really be thinking outside the box a little bit, international schools, whatever it is. Um, we also, though, you know, we, I have to appreciate that families are comfortable sometimes with what they know and what they've heard of and what um, you know, they hear, um, what they see on social media a lot. So I think we see those trends. Um, we will still try. We build college lists for students in our um initial post-secondary planning meeting, and we keep that list in their school links account. We tell kids not to delete schools from it, um, even if they haven't heard of those schools. And so we really do try to encourage families to think outside the box a little bit. Um, and we're still working on it. It doesn't always, you know, some people are more open than others and, you know, and then you'll get one, a student will finally consider a school that wasn't very popular. That student went, had a great experience, and then before you know it, three years later, fifty kids are applying a year to that college, right? So these things kind of these things sort of happen. I think Jody Saketa could attest to how that works. Yeah. So that kind of happens from year to year.
Uh, any other further questions? All right. Well, again, thanks for a tremendous presentation of tremendously good news. Uh, we're all proud of uh the kids and um and the staff. You've been amazing. So thank you. Okay, um, next on the agenda, the consent agenda. Um, I just want to, before we uh, I asked for a motion, just want to recognize on the consent agenda, uh, the WISPTO um is providing several gifts, including uh grade level materials for indoor resource recess, sorry, a playground stencil paint and painting supplies, uh, a digital concert piano and trolley, and two interactive STEM walls. Um, can't wait to see those. So anyway, thank you to the WISPTO. Can I have a motion to approve the uh consent agenda?
Move that the Weston Board of Education accept the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you, David. Is there a second? Thank you, Sharon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you for that. Uh, we moving on to the policies. Um, I don't even want to count how many there are, but I know they're grouped for a reason. So I appreciate that. And uh, uh, Erica, did you want to take us through that? Or Sharon, I I'm not sure who who's in charge of the kickoff?
I I want to actually hop in here for a second, and I've had a little bit of a conversation with Erica about it. Um, for those of, for those of you, uh, Lisa and Michael on the policy committee, I apologize that I haven't had a chance to say anything to you about it. Um, but there are some policies that we're looking to sunset, and I would like to actually hold off on sunsetting those policy knows, the policies now. Um, let me explain briefly my thought process on that. With further reflection based upon our um discussion that we had at the policy meeting this month, it kind of occurred to me that um, there's a possibility that those policies, even though we saw them and we thought, why are they on here? It's a little bit of common sense, um, that there could be a good, good reason for them being policies, even though they seem simply like common sense, just like um, just like a package of cigarettes says that they can cause cancer. There's a reason why they have to sometimes have a common sense warning on them. And uh, sometimes that's for the protection of the district. So my thought process is rather than sunset these, I think it might be within our best interest to do a little bit more research on these policies, why they exist, and to make sure that we're, by eliminating these policies, we're not putting the district at risk. Um, uh, that, you know, when, if if and when uh there would ever be a lawsuit, um investigators looking for policies and looking for loopholes might be able to utilize the fact that these policies aren't in there to work against us. So I would like to do a little bit more research and and discussion in committee before we bring them to the board to um sunset them. So that's my thought process. Michael, Lisa, if you guys have any thoughts you want to share or anything to say, let me know.
Right. Um, I I understand what you're saying, Sharon. I know I'm not on the committee. Um, so, so rather than take the action tonight, um, you're saying you want to come back. And so that gives us all a chance, all, you know, sort of a second read idea.
Right.
That's, that's fair.
Those are for the ones, yeah, those are for the ones specifically that we were looking to sunset. The others we can still discuss. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. All right. So we'll wait on that. Um, thank you. If there's any questions from other board members, just for the policy committee to think about, um, you can uh add them now or perhaps email Sharon and Erica. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So that uh brings us to the second. No, wait a minute. The first one, required policies for adoptions. All right. Sorry, I got the order reversed. All right, um, this is discussion um, and possible action. That's not a required action. It's it's for discussion. Um, uh, Sharon and or Erica, do you want to give us the background on these? They've already said required, as in we don't have them now and we need to put them in. Is that it?
Yes, that's correct. These would be new for Weston Public Schools, and statutorily, they are required policies. The first one is four-one-one-three-point-two, duty-free lunch for teachers. And this policy basically ensures the districts in compliance with Public Act twenty-two dash eighty, which mandates that teachers and other certified staff receive a minimum of thirty minutes uninterrupted lunch period. Um, four-two-one-two-point-four-two, drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers is also a required policy that that currently Weston Public Schools does not have. It ensures the district and its contracted transportation providers comply with federal and state laws governing school bus driver safety, drug and alcohol testing, and emergency preparedness. And five-one-one-eight-point-two, educational rights of military students. Um, it ensures the district meets its obligation under Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Milit- Military Children, which aims to reduce barriers and disruptions experienced by students from military families who frequently relocate due to parental deployment or transfer. Um, the district will be in compliance um with this um, aligning with both federal and Connecticut state law CGS ten dash fifteen F. So again, all three of these are required statutorily, and Weston Public Schools currently does not have these policies.
Right. And are these model policies from um Cave or an attorney or, okay? All right. So it's a good place to start. All right. Any questions, comments on any of the wording in the policy? Again, these don't exist. Uh, so this will be our, this will be our starting ground for those.
I I don't have any comments. I think they're very straightforward, but I uh, I know Deb, you weren't part of our last meeting. I'm going to ask that we do not waive the second reading. I think it's a bad pro- process or procedure for us to get into, as dry as these are, and I don't think that they have any conflict whatsoever. At some point, when do, when does those lines get blurred between something that's very dry and straightforward? So I would simply ask that, like, last time around, we do not waive the second read.
Okay, um, David, I hear what you're saying, and I might agree with you on on other policies that already exist. I'm just a little curious about. These don't exist. We're adopting them. Um, so if the second read would help you, that's great. Um, you know, I can go either way, but I just want to point out, these are not revisions of existing. These are uh mandatory, and we don't have them yet.
And not only are they mandatory, but they're also basically um model policies that we've taken from uh our lawyers. So I mean, of course, you know, if you're not comfortable voting for it, that totally makes sense. And and revisions are a little different too, when you're taking an older policy and you're trying to update it, but this one is a pretty much cookie cutter straight from the lawyers. Um, so that's it on that one.
All right.
Yeah, yeah. And my concern is simply precedent, and then at what point do we become the arbiters of what's important to community, not? I, I don't have a problem with the three. I just, it's, I think we just should stick to what we've done in the past, even if they're super dry and straightforward, because then we become the arbiters of what's important to the community and what's not.
Okay. Um, again, I I think we're doing, we're not quite doing that, but that's all right. Are there any other comments?
Um, so I'll just jump in. Look, I agree with David. I mean, I think it it potentially opens up in the future. You know, i- it 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 provides a lot of, I think, opportunity for for us to open the aperture to let in other policies in the first read sort of passing scenario. And so I'd, I'd love to keep it as two reads, Deb, if we could. Um, my one question just on the drugs and alcohol um, policy, and and maybe this is for Phil. Phil, I don't want to put you on the spot necessarily, but um, isn't a lot, I assume this language is in, is in our contract, um, is in our transportation contract, correct? Is that, i- is there any language in there that of course allows us to, or or at least um, puts forth that the transportation company will actually do this drug testing and is is bound by this and will provide um, those results to the uh, you know, to the district?
Um, I have to double-check if there's specific language within the contract, but in term, as a matter of practice, that is currently their practice, where every travel, and I think also to receive your CDL, that is a requirement.
Okay. All right, thanks, Phil.
I I have a quick question, and I don't know. Um, I guess who who are on the, uh, I know Nicole, you are a lawyer. So maybe you can help us out with this one, although I'm not asking for legal advice. Um, but with these policies that we're um proposing right now that are, and I understand the first read, second read, I'm kind of more of a fan of two reads as well. But with new policies that are mandated by the state, are we at risk if we waive them for two months? If we wait, if we don't have a policy in place by two, for two months? Does that put us at ri- risk as a district?
That is not something that I I know that I don't have the answer to that, and I would probably consult board counsel to to. Um, but I do agree with Deb that if the policy is required by law for a school district to adopt, it's going to need to be adopted in some form or the other. But yes, the public might weigh in on the the contents or the language. So I don't know if two reads is detrimental, but I also understand the value.
All right. Well, I um, you know, I think policy, adopting policy is one of the most important things uh that the Board of Ed does. Um, so if there is any doubt about um, you know, not wanting to skip over the first read and go into the second without a second read, I understand that. Um, you know, again, I I might think that a new policy is a little bit of a different animal, but I think it can wait until next month, unless Erica, you know of a deadline by which we're supposed to have this in place. Is there any requirement, like we need it by December first? Or we just have to have it, and there's kind of a open end on the date?
These are policies that should have been in place prior to. Um, they're already delayed, but um, you know, there's contractual language most likely in the bus contract statutorily. Um, you you can't get a CDL without the drug and alcohol clearinghouse requirements that guarantees um, every CDL driver is our screen through a national database. And currently, our teacher's contract has the thirty-minute provision clause. So there are places where we are covered in the absence of these policies. Is it great practice? No. Can they, can we wait and take them to a second read next month? Yes. If we have students who move in with, you know, um, with parents in the military and we need to make some decisions, we can, we can certainly tap the board if if that is the circumstance.
Okay. All right. Well, why don't we cut this to, let's just move forward then, and we will wait on these as well. Um, you've already said, uh, Sharon, you're going to hold off on the sunset idea.
Yeah.
And um, then the last policies, and again, we'll just assume that we'll um not waive the for, you know, waive the second read. But are there any uh questions or comments for the committee so they can bring it back again?
This was on the equal treatment of, there's a variety of, of, I don't have that agenda right now in front of me, but I believe that that was one of them, correct? Equal treatment of recruiters or colleges? And
Uniform, uniform treatment of recruiters, twenty-two.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right.
And thirty-five sixteen-point-four, which was bloodborne pathogens exposure control, a review of the policy and a revision of the bylaw of the regulation, sorry. Um, twenty-two sixty holds on the destruction of electronic information and paper records. I believe that was also just um a review. Policy and regulation systems, twenty-two thirty-one, and twenty-two ten administrative leeway in the absence of Board of Education policy.
Right, okay.
I I have a quick, quick, quick question. Um, for policy twenty-two sixty- I, I have a quick, quick, quick question. Um, for policy twenty-two sixty, it just looks like the first sentence. We took the title and put it in as a first sentence, so we may want to strike that. Um, that's the holds on destruction of electronic information record. So a little pedantic, but just want to tighten up that language in the first line. And then, and then I had a general question. There were two other policies that we had covered and Sharon, maybe you know this answer. It was the survey of students, which was new, and then there was the security of buildings and grounds. And it didn't look like those were included here, or, or Erica, maybe you're shaking your head. Why, why weren't those included?
Um, it was my understanding that the policy committee wanted me to work on those further based on, and bring them back to the committee before surfacing at the board meeting.
Perfect. Okay. Great. Thank you. Thanks, Erica.
That makes sense. All right. Uh, any comments on the policies, um, recommended for review that Erica?
Yeah, I had a quick question on twenty-two ten.
Twenty-two ten administrative leeway. Yes.
Yes. So my question is, and I understand, uh, basically the red line is the new, the, the strikeouts, the old. What is the rationale behind striking out the old? Because on the surface, it would appear to me that, that there's some level of accountability that comes with what's being struck out. And there doesn't appear to be accountability in the revised version. So I'm looking for the spirit or the intent of the change?
Yeah. So that was based on if a, a decision needed to be made by the superintendent in a, in a timely manner, it would be made. But it, but it wouldn't go to the board until the next potential board meeting, which would be like a month later. And I think the board probably would have, would be just notified naturally through whatever decision was being made. If there was an, an immense decision, like a school closure due to a pandemic, that wouldn't sort of be at the disclosure of the superintendent in that moment. My assumption is there would be an emergency board meeting that would handle a decision like this, that.
Okay. So the spirit is not to potentially be able to go back and, and look at what happened and, and change policies. Like I see that's languages is still in there. Is it more the timeline in which the expectation is that it would be reviewed?
Yes. And the degree to which the, you know, a decision would be, would be made, um, for decisions that are highly sensitive in nature and or huge impacting the overall large school community. My, my guess would be that there would be a special or emergency meeting that the, that we would convene with the board for decisions of that magnitude.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Um, I have a question or a comment on policy twenty-two seventy, a uniform treatment of recruiters. Um, I'm happy to bring this up with the subcommittee, but there's a revision that if a student or a parent objects to disclosure of their name and information to recruiter, um, there's a strikeout that that request is, doesn't need to be made in writing. And I have concerns about requests not being made in writing. And so I would, I would have all requests to be in writing.
I don't remember why we, I don't recall why we struck the in writing. Erica, do you happen to remember? Or Michael, Lisa, do you remember why we, why that strike is there?
I don't have my notes from the committee meeting in front of me, but.
If I remember correctly, isn't that the, this question is asked during the demographics information that is sent out to parents that they have to review at the beginning of the school year? It's that whole questionnaire that you can't submit. So it's not necessarily that it is a specific note in writing to the counseling department. It's something that they check yes or no to at the beginning of the school year. And of course, if anything were to change at a later point in time, the parent could at that point make a request. But in the beginning of the school year, it's on that demographics form.
So that would still be writing.
I guess it would be.
So, so not having something be on a survey or email or anything would suggest oral. So it could be phone call. It could be in-person conversation. We don't know to who it would be. And it's just, it just gets a lot more murky. So I did notice that on, in the first sentence where it says, on an annual basis, a school district will notify parents. That suggests that there is some kind of written communication to the student body or the parents that they are having to respond to. So that would be in writing, but I, I'm just, I would, I would have hesitation to remove anything requiring something be in writing, because that would suggest that an oral notification is sufficient, which is not in line with clean communication and record keeping. So that everybody's on the same page about what is going on with the student's information.
So then by definition, in like the survey that we sent, um, not the survey, but the form that we sent out, we send out via power school where parents have to check the box or not check the box would constitute in writing.
I believe so. Cause you, I mean, you'll get record of that back.
Right.
Without having to have a conversation with that.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we could, we could certainly, um, it's coming back to the board for a second read. We can certainly get rid of that strike through if, if we determine that that is actually in fact in, in writing.
Maybe we say something along the lines of in writing or electronic communication. Because it, whether somebody said, if somebody sends an email, then with a timestamp on it, that would also be, they would consider that to be in writing. So objects in writing or via electronic communication, that can also cover us in the instance of the school survey that we send out, because that is an electronic communication.
Okay. I can make that edit.
Okay. Would that be good? Do you, what do you think, Nicole? Does that work for you?
Yes. But I would, I would also say the second strike through, if a parent then changes their mind after that survey, it should also again be communicated in writing, because you just, the parent needs to have the record. The school district needs to have the record. Like everyone who's looking at a student's information and disclosing it to somebody else needs to know on a system that the parent said their information can be disclosed.
That's in there when the red, it says, or the parent makes a request in writing to the school counseling office to change.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry. I was, sorry. I didn't see the in writing part. I was looking at the second struck, struck language, which I thought in the, in writing was struck. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other, um, questions? All right.
Thanks for the feedback, everyone.
All right. Well, thanks for the discussion and thanks for the work in the policy committee. You, you guys are, are doing a lot of, um, a lot of work. So thank you for that. Uh, district updates. Superintendent. I don't have a report this evening. Thank you. Okay. Uh, pupil personnel.
Hi, everybody. I have two quick updates for you tonight. Um, first, we are very pleased to report that we had a record number, at least in my tenure, of responses for the ELC lottery this year, um, equating to a total of fifty-five completed applications. Of those thirty-five families applied for the fours program and thirty families applied for the threes program. And we also had a pretty even split between boys and girls. Um, for those of you who have done a preschool lottery, that is also unusual and beneficial to our process. Um, based on this high level of interest, we are planning for five preschool classrooms for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. We have four in the current school year. Um, our lottery is being held tomorrow, November eighteenth, and we are notifying families of their status the week of December first. And then separate update, I believe I also mentioned in a previous meeting that I've received some feedback from the special education PTO liaisons that families would like the parent meetings this year to focus on individual schools rather than being, um, designed for district-wide presentations. Um, so our first parent meeting of the year is scheduled for December 2nd at nine AM in the South House cafeteria at Hurlbut. Uh, Hurlbut is the first school that we will be focused on this year. And the topic for the presentation is understanding special education services at HES. Um, additional information will be coming this week from the PTO liaisons, and I'll be sending a district-wide communication as well. Um, we will make a recording of the presentation available for people who cannot attend in person, and I look forward to seeing families there. And that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Tracy. Um, and that's good news all around. Wow. It's amazing that parents plan that far ahead and, um, and thank you for being responsive about the PTO meetings. Uh, the next update, finance and operations.
Um, no updates, but we did not meet.
Okay. Um, moving on to committee updates. Um, I know Lisa, you sent something out from cave. Do you have anything to add? Okay. You're on, you're on mute, but you're nodding no. So I'm assuming that's no.
There are, no, there are lots of workshops going on that board members can sign up for, um, as well as new board member workshops. November twentieth is, um, uh, a, a large, um, networking workshop. Um, and that's it.
All right. Thank you. Uh, CES? I'm not sure. David, is that you?
That's me. Nothing noteworthy to report on.
All right. Curriculum committee?
That's me. And I am actually going to ask Tina.
Tina is not with us this evening.
Okay. So I'll just simply say it, we, we, there was a lot to digest. And we talked about MTSS and I got schooled on MTSS, which is multi, uh, hold on a minute, we have multi-tiered system of support. I think I got that right. Right, Erica?
Got it right.
Okay. Uh, it was fascinating because it's yet another program that the district has in place to sort of make sure our students are successful in multiple ways. The social emotional piece, the academic piece, the, the SILs, kind of all these other programs. And what was fascinating to me was we seem to run multiple types of programs concurrently to really make sure our students are successful. And at the end of the presentation, uh, Tina got me where she always has to get me, which is she said, this is what we need from the board of ed and the community, and it's supportive of these programs and continued funding on the budget. So it goes to show that Tina, uh, understands, uh, our role and, and how we can lobby to make sure that these programs are successful. So we talked about MTSS and, um, it, it was, it just, again, it, I'm not sure who said it. Small district, very individualized, uh, learning and attention. And this was a prime example of that.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, EOC?
Uh, we did not meet, but Deb, uh, very, uh, artfully described the next, uh, six months for us with a hard deadline in June. So we all look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, um, where are we? You'll see finance and operations.
Well, Steve's not here, but we did, we didn't meet.
Okay. Okay. Uh, policy committee?
Okay. We met.
You did. I know that. That, you've got lots of evidence there.
We had a lot of work and we're going to keep meeting. So there we have it. You guys read what we did in our policy meeting. So yeah, we met. We're good.
All right. Good to go. Uh, safety and security. Um, Michael?
We did not meet, but we are picking that back up in December.
Okay. Thank you. And the Weston Education Foundation is, uh, somebody's the liaison?
It's me. I am.
Okay.
We had a circus on Saturday. It was the cutest thing. It was really kind of geared towards the WIS crowd, uh, Hurlbut and WIS crowd. And they had the Westchester Circus come in and perform at the high school. And there was like an interactive portion of it before and after, and it was really super cute. And, um, yeah, they were, they were raising some funds for some of their wonderful programs and projects that they support, um, in the district. And, uh, I couldn't have been happier to have been there and seen all the kids running around. They had, oh, high school kids volunteered, various groups and organizations in the high school volunteered to help sell popcorn and cotton candy and do tattoos and face painting and games with the kids. And they'll, they just loved it. So it was really nice, again, just like during the parade, to see the older kids come out and help the younger kids. And, um, it was just, it was a really nice community afternoon. So that's it.
All right. Yeah. Great. Thanks for that report. Um, all right. Uh, Jody's put down the, uh, the next, uh, scheduled meeting for the board of ed. Uh, you heard my, um, request at the beginning of the meeting to start adding meetings to address the facilities issues. So I will, um, uh, Pat, uh, Jody and I will try to coordinate, uh, dates with Erica and then get that out to you. And I realize it's an added burden and more work and you were not necessarily anticipating that. So I understand that not everybody will be able to make every meeting. So please do not feel overly guilty, but do the best you can so that we can have a quorum at each of our meetings. Um, okay. Adjournments. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Come on, David.
I, I was gonna.
Everybody would want to do this.
Yeah. Well, normally Lisa takes that one, but I will quickly say move that the Western Board of Education adjourn the November seventeenth, 2025 meeting.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No? All right. Thank you, everyone, especially the staff for your patience and your late hours. So we will see you soon. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.